Currently adding to the chat right now, a new link for submitting questions. It will be posted, reposted periodically throughout the night. This link will allow you to click on the link, it will pull up a form. The form is, is through Airtable. And you will put in your name, address, your question. And then if you could also tag the topic of your question. Is your question related to the teaching and learning models being discussed tonight? Is it related to health and hygiene? Is it related to school operations like technology or transportation? Do you have a question regarding social emotional adjustment for our students? And so if you can tag that, that'll help us organize the discussion somewhat. But in terms of how the meeting is going to go, we're gonna go through our informational updates. Then the administration will be presenting their plans to us. The committee will go around and we'll go around our virtual table here and make some comments. And then we're going to try and open it up for questions to the public. As I said, we won't be able to get to all questions tonight, but we're gonna do our best. So to keep things moving, that chat, that link will be in the background. So people can start populating questions now while we do updates. And I'll turn it over to Bill for superintendent update.
Well, the only update that I have tonight, because I'm, I'm gonna keep it very brief, because this could be a very long meeting, is that we'll talk about the plan in a minute. But and I think this ties into something that Ingrid might mention. We are currently in the process of estimating any incremental costs that might be associated with this plan. So we won't have that information for you tonight, but we hope to have a better sense of it at next Monday night's meeting. I don't have anything other in the update, other than that, because we have been totally consumed with putting together the reopening plan.
Normally, we would have an assistant superintendent update at this point, but Carrie's not with us tonight, correct, Bill?
Yes, Carrie notified us about forty minutes ago that she had a family emergency and would not be able to join the meeting tonight. Now, Chris Chu, Lori McDermott, and Courtney Moran also served on the Teaching and Learning Committee. And they are prepared to fill in and convey to you and to the audience the nexus of the teaching and learning component of the reopening plan.
Thank you to everyone who's subbing in on short notice. And of course, good wishes to Carrie. We hope everything's okay. Ingrid, do you have a finance update?
Well, Bill, Bill stole my thunder, but no, I mean, I think what we'd like to hear tonight, too, is, you know, your initial impressions. And that will help us guide us some with the cost estimates, which we're working on. It's really, you know, now drilling down into the details on what staff will be needed for various models and such. So we'll have some estimates for you next week at your meeting next Monday. And then otherwise, I'll cover some of the COVID funding later, as you have on the agenda.
Great, thank you. As far as school committee update goes, the only update that I have is a reminder to the committee and also to the public. Normally, we meet every other week. But through a quirk of scheduling, the way the July schedule fell and the way our fall schedule is starting, we do have back-to-back meetings. Given the timing of discussing these reopening plans, that actually works out real well. So we will be meeting tonight. If we don't get to all questions, don't worry, because we will also be meeting next Monday night, August 3rd. So put that one on your calendar as well. Any other updates from school committee members? Do we have, I know it's not on the agenda, but then school's not exactly in session yet. But do we have a student update? Okay, I'm not seeing a hand wave, and I think you're on mute, Brian. So I'm assuming we don't have a student update tonight? Okay, great, no worries. Before we get to our first order of business, Chris, I know you're watching the Q and A as well. And Alicia, is, are there any questions that aren't related to reopening for public forum for something that's not on our agenda? Doesn't look like it. Okay, then we will just continue with the agenda. And the first item is an announcement from Chris Sanders. I will mention, this isn't, we are going to have an announcement tonight. Obviously, if we began a discussion about all the issues surrounding race and ethnicities in our schools, it would be hours before we got to the reopening topic. So this is just an announcement this evening, but we wanted to update the public on our efforts. Chris?
Thank you, Gloria. Yeah, so obviously, in the past couple of months, there have been a lot of conversations around the country and in Westford about racial justice, what race in Westford looks like. And we've heard from so many people, and it's been really important. We know, I know we voted in June to vote our support for the Westford Public Schools eight can't wait demands about eight improvements that we can make as educators in Westford to make it a more equitable, anti-racist, and diverse school district. One of the things that came out of a lot of those conversations was just the need to hear the voices of the people of color in this community and in our schools. Voices that maybe didn't always feel like they were being heard. Voices that have stories to tell that may be hard to hear, but that are important for us to hear. And in those conversations, we decided that was a valuable next step was to have an event where we could listen to those voices. Just listen, not chime in, not weigh in with what we think, but really just hear our students and our past students on experiences that they've had in dealing with race and ethnicity in our schools. So that's what we have lined up for this Wednesday. It's been out there, I know it's been out on Facebook, we've, I think there have been emails, but I want to draw everybody's attention to it. Both if you want to attend as a, as an attendee, as a viewer, just to listen. And I'll share links in the chat in a moment. But more importantly, for anyone who might have something to say. I know, you know, one of the groups that we've talked to and kind of partnered with on this is the Westford Coalition for Change, which is a group of students who are collecting stories. They have an Instagram account. They're collecting student stories. And as I said before, they, they're hard to hear sometimes, and they're hard to read. But they're really powerful, and they've done a really phenomenal job of doing that. So it's sort of in that spirit that we want to have people tell their stories. So just quickly, what people need to know, and again, like I said, I will share the links. But it's this Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM, it's a virtual event. We have two moderators who are recent alums, class of 2018, who essentially will be the only people, besides the people telling their stories, the only people who are speaking. This is not, well, it's a school committee sponsored event. We're not going to be there talking, or we're not even going to have our camera for the most part. We're really going to be there to listen. And our moderators will do a lot of the talking. But basically, it'll be a series of folks telling their story. And those who might have something to share, I want them to know that they can share it if they feel like if they want to be seen and heard. We, we love that, and that's, we'll have, they'll have the opportunity, opportunity to do that. If they're not as comfortable doing that, they can submit their story and have our moderators read it. So that can be anonymous. So there's really two ways to do it. But it really is to listen to them. We want to create a space that's safe and respectful and welcoming for them to tell their stories and feel comfortable doing so. We have, we have a link that I'll share. If you do want to submit a story or tell a story, we'd like you to, to sign up to do so. So we have an idea of who's talking. It's really just gonna be the moderators who see that list. But we'd ask that you do that by noon on Wednesday, just so we have a few hours notice of who's talking. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to me. But also, the link I share for you to sign up to, to, to share a story, there's also an opportunity on there to submit a question or concern. We wanna, we want to pull from a, as diverse a group as possible for this. And if there's any barrier to people feeling comfortable telling their story or sharing it, but they want to talk to us about it, we can do that through other channels and other means, too. So I think, I think that's the gist of it. If anyone has any additional comments, questions, or anything I might have missed, I welcome that right now.
Any, any questions from the committee just about the logistics of the event that we're holding and the goal? Thank you so much, Chris, for all of the work that has gone in for organizing this. And, and a special thank you to all of the students and young alum who have reached out to us through email, who have taken the time to have phone calls with us and talk to us about their concerns and talk to us about the, the preparation and the organization of this event that it was really inspired by them and their advocacy and their concerns. And we want to be able to amplify their voices and give them a chance to share their stories to a broader group in the Westford community. So we really do encourage everyone to please log on and listen to these young people. They have a lot to say. If there are no other, I, I don't see any other questions. I know we kind of skipped through public forums, so that's why I'm just looking back. The questions are coming in rapidly, there are many of them. But they look like they are all related to reopening. Thank you to everyone for playing along with our new format here. And now we'll turn it back to Bill, you and the administration, to hear your presentation tonight.
All right, thank, thank you very much, Gloria. And thank you to all of you and to the parents, students, staff, and community members who are viewing tonight. Over the last six weeks, we have had a committee of fifty-seven people that include teachers, administrators, guidance personnel, school psychologists, nurses, curriculum coordinators, adjustment counselors, representatives in the athletic department, director of digital learning, technology technicians, special education, and some of you who were able to join our subcommittees working on developing a framework for reopening our school system. The importance of presenting this to you tonight is that the initial submittal of this plan, which we consider the, an initial draft, is to be sent to the Department of Education for this Friday, July 31st. Any modifications to the plan based on your input to us as a result of your questions, your comments, and the comments of parents and staff and students from the community will be incorporated into the final draft, which is to be submitted to the Department of Education for August 10th. I'd like to think that we're out in front of this and have been for some time. We are very proud of the document we have put together with the understanding that this plan does not make everyone happy in terms of what they might want to see, in terms of the form of education, the type of model that I have selected. We were given three instructive choices by the Commission of Education. Develop in this plan, a plan for a full return of students, a hybrid, which involves some in-person teaching and remote learning, synchronous, both synchronous and asynchronous, and a fully remote learning model. I want to thank the, the subcommittees, the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, the Social and Emotional Adjustment Subcommittee, the Operations Subcommittee, the Hygiene Protocols and Facilities Subcommittee for their extraordinary work. And I also want to thank Mike Wells, the Director of Technology, Jeff Stevens, Health Department Director, Gail Johnson, the Town Nurse, and Westford Pediatrics, with whom our Director of Nursing, Joan Mitchell, consulted. I also want to thank the community and the staff for their questions and comments during the 715 attending parent forum and about 350 staff about a week and a half to two weeks ago for providing us with questions and information. And once again, thank you to you, those of you who were able to participate in some of our, our subcommittee work. Chris, if you could bring up the slides, if you would, please. I'm gonna write to the recommendation slide, which I believe is the third slide. There we go. And for those who may not have seen the plan until this point, I am recommending the hybrid learning model to the, to the school committee, to our staff, and to the community. I'm doing so because I do believe, based on some of the research that has been done of medical nature, some of the psychological information that has presented by, been presented by the American Academy of Pediatrics, I do believe that with the precautions that we're taking, it will be safe for students to return and staff to return to school on a limited scale. And that's what we have intended to do. Trying to, trying to move everyone back into the process of education as we have known it for many, many years, but with the safeguards that the DESE, that the CDC, that the Massachusetts Department of Public Health have advised us on. If I could have the next slide, Chris? In developing this plan, what we have consistently drawn on is the, is the information and guidance from the Center for Disease Control, for the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and for the medical consultants who have been advisors to the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Jeff Riley. Those consultants have indicated that, based on the statistics associated with the occurrence and the number of cases of COVID-19 patients, they do believe that it is safe to, for us to return to school to, to some extent and within some model. If I could have the next slide, Chris? Now, a number of weeks ago, probably about eight weeks ago, the Department of Education came out with some guidance that, that advised us that it would be necessary to have six feet of distancing between students in the school and students and adults. Then the Department of Education, based on medical consultation with officials from Mass, Mass General Hospital and other epidemiologists, were willing to lower that to three feet of distancing. Now, the language from the Department of Ed said they would aspire, they would like us to aspire to six feet of distancing, but three feet is acceptable. What I have said to our reopening committee is that three feet is not acceptable to us, that we will go with the CDC recommendation of six feet, because the CDC considers close contact as being less than six feet for more than fifteen minutes between some individuals. So I am going to go with the, the six feet of distancing that exceeds the latest guidance from the Department of Education. So once again, the second bullet, we're following the Center for Disease Control guidance. All students will wear masks. I know the DESE has stated that children in K and grade one do not have to wear them. We're going to require all students to be, to be wearing masks. We have taken carefully planned precautions in our operations subcommittee to make sure that students are as safe as possible on a school bus. And we'll get into that a little bit later in the operations subcommittee, and in school. And we have come up with cleaning and disinfecting procedures that in some cases will require the hiring of additional personnel to clean and disinfect during the day and during the evening. I do want to, and I know you can't really see this at home, but one of the documents that we used was a detailed spreadsheet developed by one of our school nurses, Cheryl Carpenter, that compared guidance statements and positions from a number of sources, including research that has been done in Europe, from school systems that have opened, from the Center for Disease Control, from the Mass Department of Public Health, and also from the American Academy of Pediatrics, and also the World Health Organization. So we have tried to consult as many legitimate sources as possible who have been thoroughly engaged in research over this virus to, to use that guidance in assisting us in our model that I've recommended. Chris, if I could have the next slide, please? The Teaching and Learning Committee obviously has had a major role in developing the, what instruction will look like for a full return, for the hybrid model that I'm recommending, and for fully remote. So I'm going to let our other attendees, our staff who participated, you know, Chris Chu and Lori McDermott, Courtney Moran, Dan Tumi, Jim Antonelli, and others, talk to you in Carrie's absence about the teaching and learning model. So, Chris?
Thank you. So the, the hybrid model that, that we're recommending is a combination of both in-person and remote learning experiences. So there will be both asynchronous and synchronous times for the students to be working together. Classes will meet together, as you'll see, in different schedules. But there will still be this asynchronous expectation for students to be working independently as well. The, the model that we're looking at has fifty percent of students coming into school at a time in order for us to accommodate the six-foot distancing that the superintendent was talking about. It would not be possible for all of our students to come into the buildings at one time. So we're looking at a model that divides our district up into two different learning pods, an A learning pod and a B learning pod. And that will be determined by last names, so that we can keep families together. So the first thing we'll do is we'll, we'll look at all of our schools, and we would divide the entire district into two different groups by last name, then looking at family units that might not share the same last name. So we'll keep all of the people in that, in that family together. And then there might be some additional requirements if we have some students who might be receiving very specific services that it would not be in their best interest to be in the opposite pod as somebody else. And we might group them together so that they can have academic peers and be working with the, the same service providers that are necessary. So that's, the first way we'd look at it would be that it would be these learning pods, A and B, divided by families, that families can stay together on the same schedule. We looked at a number of different ways in which to schedule the time. And finally, after a great deal of discussion, what we have determined is that one week on, one week off model for the in-person instruction would be the best thing for us, with the exception at the preschool. So if you look on the screen, you'll see that there'll be five As in a row and five Bs in a row, so that the A pod would come in every single day for one week, while the, while the B pod would be working from home. And then the next week, that would flop, so that then the A pod would be working from home and the B pod would be coming into school. The exception being the preschool model, which would go every other day. We're looking at a early release day schedule in the morning, so that one group of students, that A pod would come in, in the morning for an early release day amount of time and have in-person support from their teachers, while the B pod would be working asynchronously on their own in the morning. Then students would be able to travel home for lunch, have lunch at home. And then for the remainder of the day, they would be working remotely. So then the B pod would be able to log in specifically and be able to connect with teachers synchronously in the afternoon. The A pod could be working independently, or teachers may choose to have both A pod and B pod come together in the afternoon for different purposes. It all depends on the, the, the learning objectives and the plans. When the students were not coming into school in the morning, they would be working remotely for the first part of the day. Then they would have their own lunch break at home. And then in the afternoon, they would log on and work live with their teachers in the afternoon. This is the sample of the Westford Academy schedules, if you can see and, and get a better idea of this. And both the, the Westford Academy schedule and the middle school schedule follows a very similar timeframe and has a similar number of classes and times that are meeting during the day. The difference is, is that at the academy, students are scheduled into seven different classes. So if you follow along, you'll see that A, the, the classes would, in the morning, would follow A, B, C, and then D, E, F, and then G over here on Wednesday. And then it would start with the rotation on A again on Wednesday, and then B, C, D, E, F, G. The difference with the middle school is that students only take six classes during the day, and so the rotation is slightly different. But as you'll see here, again, at eleven o'clock, students would travel and go home. At twelve o'clock, the A block that was working remotely, this B pod here in gray, you'll see, was working remotely and asynchronously in the morning. They would have an opportunity to log in from twelve to twelve-thirty with their teacher. And then with a, a five-minute break for students, and then from twelve-thirty-five to one oh five, the B block students would be able to log in with their teacher. And then the same with C block here as well. And so that would go, one group would come in for the entire week. And then the other group would be working in the morning and then be able to, to, they would then swap for the next, for the next week. So why did we come up with an early release day? Well, the, the big thing that actually was driving this factor, honestly, was lunches. In order to provide the, the necessary distance for lunches, we were needing to add at least twice as many lunches, which then stretching that amount over time was becoming prohibitive in the way to, to schedule the day. And so when we started looking at if it was possible to have students leave and bring lunches home with them, so that they would still have the opportunity to get lunch at school, then they would be able to eat at home. And we would not be, we would not need to lose the amount of time that we would be losing to create the number of lunches that were necessary in order for students to eat during school. And students in their remote week, they would also have an opportunity to pick up lunch from school. Or we even talked about the possibility of families picking up lunch kits for the week, similar to what we had done in the spring. Another big aspect of this was that the guidance that, that we've been given specifically for the wide range of students that we have and their ages is that wearing masks for part of the day was much more manageable to have students working in these very static classrooms set up in rows in ways that the majority of our students have never really been in, in environments that, that were this rigid. You know, if we shortened the day and allowed it to be, it, it would be more bearable and more manageable for students to work through that process and then be able to have the time at home, where they'd be able to have more flexibility, they'd be able to not wear masks, they'd be able to have more opportunities for movement on their own. Shortening the day together just decreases the contact points. Bringing fifty percent of the kids into the building decreases the number of contacts that would be taking place. And then finally, the other thing that we just talked about was just even the social nature of our students at all different grade levels. The idea of just even putting them all together and then requiring them to remain physically distanced from each other is, is going to be a challenge, and it'll be difficult for students. In addition to our hybrid model, every district is also charged by the state to have a full remote option for families who are opting out of any type of in-person return. And so we, we are having that, we are developing a remote learning academy, which would be servicing immunocompromised children or families that are concerned and worried about COVID-19. This is organized by Westford Public Schools. So this is not a homeschooling option that has been mentioned at times, that families still have the, the choice to do that. But this is, this would be completely developed by the Westford Public Schools, and we would be utilizing our resources to do that. The issue is that we don't know exactly what that's gonna look like, because there's still a lot of unknowns with this model. What we do know is that it will have a mixture of synchronous and asynchronous instruction, just like the hybrid version. There would be synchronous class meetings, they won't be in-person, but they would be virtually. They'd be, we would be using our resources in order for classes to meet together at the same time. Plus, they would still have their asynchronous amount of expectations that they would be doing. that they would be doing on their own. It'll still be aligned to our frameworks. It'll provide, by allowing classes to come together synchronously, it'll provide students with a sense of community, even within this remote learning academy, and we will still, within the remote learning academy, we will be meeting all of our students' needs in terms of specialized instruction, whether it be special education, whether it be English-language learners, we will still be meeting their needs within this, within this model. The things that we're still waiting for is that the Department of DESI is still releasing materials as to what their expectations are in terms of these models. There's still the need for impact bargaining between Westford Education Association and School Committee. We're still, we still need to gather information from staff regarding their availability to participate in a remote learning academy, and we still will need data from parents to really understand how many students would be participating in this, because that will determine which resources we're able to leverage in order to best develop that model. There have been a lot of questions in terms of what if a family chooses the remote learning academy, wants to switch to the hybrid, or going back and forth the other way. And so what we're asking is that families commit to their decision for the first semester, but if a family has a particular need and needs to switch in advance of that date, we will certainly work with those families. But the more information we have in terms of their, as far as their commitment, it'll just allow us to plan more appropriately for that. So some additional information here, again, a reminder that in the hybrid model, we will still be providing specialized instruction to students. It may be a mixture of face-to-face and remote learning, depending on the students' needs. We are talking about, and we are already going to, return to our typical grading practices. So this is not going to be a credit versus no credit system that we utilized in the spring. This would be a return to the practices at each grade level. So the elementary schools were operating on a standards-based report card, the majority of the middle schools were operating on traditional grading, however, some were still operating with standards-based, and then the academy, they're operating on the traditional grading, and so we're looking to return to that. The whole idea of transitions being minimized here, so the cohort model is being used at the elementary and the middle school. We're looking at, the middle schools will be rescheduled in the schedules that were released earlier in the summer, at the end of the school year, we will be needing to readjust those schedules so that we can even create smaller cohorts, so that students are not mixing as we would like them to be able to do in a, in our traditional environment that we've been able to do. A Westford Academy, they'll have less transitions built into their day, and they're going to look at staggering those, and as the superintendent said, Mr. Antonelli is here with us, and he'll be able to answer some questions specifically to that as well. Kindergarten classes will be half-day in the morning, so full-day kindergarten will not be offered. The full-day option, we just can't justify that on the remote, doing that remotely in the afternoon, it's just, it's not practical for kindergarten learners, so we've made a decision that we would not be offering the full-day kindergarten. But it will still follow the same model as the grade one through 12, which would be the full week on, full week off. We did look at an AM/PM model, we talked about that at great lengths within the Teaching and Learning Committee, but transportation is a barrier to that, to be able to move all of the other students from the other grades and still be able to pick up the kindergartners and get them where they needed to be was not practical. We're looking at, the entire state will be looking at power standards more specifically this year, rather than just even our traditional grade-level Massachusetts standards, because we do need to focus in and simplify, knowing that there is still a lot of work to be done to help move kids forward from the spring. And with that, we move on to our school operations group.
Well, this is a, really a 5,000-foot level optic of school operations. I would ask that you refer to the spreadsheets in the operations section that have links with very detailed information, oftentimes by your child's respective school. The committee did an excellent job providing as much detail about a child's experience and logistics and mobility from entrance to ending of the school day, and so I would encourage you to really click on the links in that document. But what we are going to be requiring and doing, if I have the next slide, please, Chris, is that face coverings will be required for students in grades K through 12. As you know, the state has given a waiver to students in K and 1, but we think to optimize the safety of not only the students themselves, but our staff, that masks will be worn by students in those particular, in those two grades. And I would ask parents at this point in time to practice, start practicing with a child in terms of wearing a mask. I know that you have become accustomed to that, and taking them out to locations, whether it be retail stores or otherwise, but I would ask that you practice for a little bit longer and longer, perhaps each day or each other day, with some positive reinforcement associated with it. As I indicated, that we are going to adhere to the six feet of distancing, and we've talked with Principal Antonelli, some of the rooms in Westford Academy right now are a little bit tight, even with half the students in, but we're going to remove some of the extra furniture that is in those rooms. Some rooms might have two teaching desks, we're going to remove a second teaching desk or some other types of auxiliary furnishings that might not necessarily be needed, we're going to move, for this particular type of model, we're going to move those out so that we can comply with the six feet of distancing. We're going to have hand sanitizers in each classroom and hand sanitizing stations throughout the building. We are proposing right now that no lockers or cubbies be used, because that brings students closer together, and oftentimes, they want to socialize with each other and hang around a little bit more than we'd like to see in conditions like this. And we're going to ask that personal items stay with the students. All students will have a Chromebook that they will be able to take to and from school, and the school system will assist with internet access concerns. We did that in the springtime, and we're prepared to do it again in the opening September. We are recommending that there be no before or after-school activities at this time. That means no early arrival option. Now, that's a popular option that I began about 18 years ago, when we implemented, maybe close to 20 years ago, when we implemented bus fees, and I wanted to sort of pace the arrival of vehicles, both school buses and private vehicles to the school. The problem now is that we won't have enough personnel to clean all of the surfaces that are touched by students in the early arrival option between the end of that program in the morning and the beginning of school for all of the students. And we know that might be an inconvenience for some parents, but it's in the best interest of the safety of all students. We are going to have to speak with the recreation department to see if we can work out some alternative sites with them that they can use for recreation programs. You know, they use our buildings heavily in the afternoons and have for many years, but we don't want to have to duplicate cleaning repeatedly every day of the school year. After-school activities may very well be remote, including even some of the activities during the daytime, such as band and chorus, at some levels will look differently and will require appropriate social distancing because of the emitting of vapor, okay, of water particles from the mouth on both of those activities, we have to be very careful. So that will be altered to some extent, depending upon the grade level. At the elementary level, we're proposing at this time, no chorus at this time, okay? There'll be no live field trips. Now, sport to be announced, to be determined. The MIAA has stated that on or about September 15th, they believe fall sports can start. I'm not so sure about that, quite honestly. Contact sports such as football, that cause some degree of perspiration, okay? And once again, the shedding of water or sweat, we're not looking to promote. Something like golf would seem to be perfectly permissible, but we need to review those sport by sport very carefully. Necessary school meetings will be held remotely for the time being. Now, very importantly, school times may need to be adjusted somewhat for transportation, cleaning, and distancing and health and safety issues, particularly on school buses. If you want to bring up the next slide, Chris, I'll talk to this in a minute. The guidance from the Department of Education, from the commissioner, is that there will be one student per seat. And what we're looking to do is alternate, if someone's on the outside of the seat, the next person's on the inside of the seat, okay? And so we're looking at, for a 77-passenger bus, particularly at the elementary level, only 25 passengers at a time. Now, keeping in mind, we will only be transporting one-half of the students at any one time, and it could in fact be a little bit less than that, depending upon the number of parents who want their children to participate in remote learning. But what we're looking to do is hire, and I'll get to that a little bit later, also is some bus monitors, some bus monitors who will be responsible for cleaning and sanitizing between runs. We cannot expect that of the driver. The driver's going to be busy moving from one school to another school, but I will caution everyone that we may need to adjust some school starting times, all of them, by 15 or 20 minutes, that might be possible, certainly, more possible than not, to allow for that amount of time for the cleaning of the buses. We are going to have portable sanitization equipment. We're still in the process of talking about what is the most effective means of disinfecting surfaces, particularly commonly touched surfaces, like the bar that the students hang on to when they either enter the bus or exit the bus, towards the front of the vehicle, the tops of the seats. So we're still in the process of what particular products and methodologies we want to use, but we already have a couple of them identified and have bought some products that we will be trying out. Chris, if I could have the next slide? Sharon and Scott on their subcommittee did an excellent job in talking about the social-emotional adjustment for our students and our staff. You know, there's quite a bit of anxiety among parents, among teachers, among students. We understand that. We want our students, we want our staff to be ready for learning with the hybrid model, and I think you'll be impressed by the work that the Social Emotional Adjustment Subcommittee has done. So I'm going to turn it over to Sharon and Scott right now.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks for having us here tonight. And first, we'd like to thank our entire committee, the Social Emotional Adjustment Committee, for their hard work and dedication to the social-emotional well-being of our students, staff, and families. It was a true team effort, and we're looking forward to our continued work together as we navigate towards the openings of Western public schools. So as a committee, we feel that the social-emotional adjustment of our students and staff need to be a priority at the beginning of the school year across all grade levels. Social emotional and learning, SEL, as defined by the Collaborative of Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning Castle, is a process through which children and adults understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for each other and others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. It's a critical factor, especially now in our re-engaging students, building relationships, and creating a foundation for safe and positive learning as we return to Western public schools. Scott, do you want to talk a little bit more about?
Sure. So, we utilize a lot of the research that, you know, tells us and shows us that if we want our students to really be able to focus on the academic expectations at school, we really have to first address the social-emotional needs of the students. For them to, you know, we say to our students all the time, we don't expect you to learn math and reading if you're not feeling safe and happy at school. And we know that with this pandemic and the school closures, there's a lot of anxiety and worry and concern of coming back to school, you know, what does it mean, what does it look like? It's going to look and feel a lot different for our students. So we know that at the beginning of the year, especially the first four to six weeks, we really want to focus on the social-emotional needs of our students. Having that said, we also know that if we want our staff to be able to support the social-emotional needs of our students, then they as well have to feel safe and, you know, happy at school, and we want to support those. So we have a lot in the plan that also addresses not only the social-emotional needs of the students, but also of our staff, doing a lot around self-care and making sure that everyone is in a place where we can be supportive of one another.
Within this model, the hybrid model, so we will be providing support for all the learners through Western public schools and all the grade levels. They'll be provided with the necessary academic, emotional, and behavioral supports to foster their educational experiences. So as a school district, we'll partner with local and outside resources in the commitment to first safety and well-being for all. The focus of Western public schools is to support the social-emotional well-being of our students and staff as we transition back to school. And the beauty of the hybrid model is that we can utilize both in-person and remote learning to support that piece. The goal of the Social Emotional Committee is that we're going to embed the social-emotional learning throughout the day. It's not going to be a 20-minute block, like today, we're going to learn about social-emotional learning, not just a meeting at the beginning day or at the end of the day, we're going to try to infuse it throughout the whole day with some transition breaks, some check-ins, some mindful activities that we'll be working on through all the grade levels. So we know that students and staff are going to need to take a break. So one thing that we've talked about is having a tag-out system for our staff. If you need to take a break, call down, somebody will come and cover for you. We're going to do the same thing with our students, who might need to be connected to a mentor within the building, for non-academics, just to check in and kind of gauge, how are you doing today? How are you feeling? Do you just need to take a walk? So we've started talking about all those different models to see how we can provide support across the board for both staff, students, and our families, with communication families being key, because we would like to provide some support for them at home and give them some structure to support social-emotional learning outside of the school day as well. So one of the parts of the model is really looking at our students' needs and taking that valuable in-person time with students and use that strategically to focus on tasks and activities that are better conducted face-to-face. So working with our staffs, our guidance staff, our classroom teachers, our special educators, our school psychologists, the administration, and actually, anyone who works in the school building, we want to give people the tools to help our students as we navigate through our opening.
And once we have these rules, that will allow us to assess the students and staff and see where we are with, you know, each individual student. There's going to be some students who need a little more support than others, and we want to be able to provide the different tiers or levels of support to the students, both in-person and at home. And like Sharon said, we want to also create a plan where we can share this information with families so that they can support the work that we're doing at school from a social-emotional standpoint at home as well. So we have a lot of great ideas that we want to do. One piece that I know we talked about is creating, we didn't have, students didn't have the opportunity to move up to their next grade, and some students, that's a big day, especially this second grade is going to third grade, the fifth grade is going to middle school, the eighth grade is going to the high school. So we are developing a transition day in there as well to, you know, create some sort of orientations in a special day for those students, so they can have some time to adjust to their new setting and learn about their new school and staff and things like that too. So we've talked about a lot of different ideas to be able to address the social-emotional needs and in the impact of all the school closures, and like Sharon said earlier, our team has been great, our committee has been great in developing these plans and ideas, and... And, um, we're working to, um, update some of the, the social emotional website that was put out in the spring. We're going to add that and make that a little more robust as well and provide a lot of information there as well, so.
One of the, the other things that we did talk about, the importance of that first week of school or the first four to six weeks of school, really focusing on that social emotional piece and not folk, putting the whole focus on academics. Because like Scott had said earlier, we need to be emotionally ready to tackle those math facts and write those essays. So we need to be able to provide our students with the tips and tools of how, we need to reconnect with our classmates, with our teachers, to have some closure from last year as well. And just acknowledge those pieces, have conversations about how we're feeling, remind our students what they liked about school and have some activities about what they remember about being at school, because they've been out of school for so long, that they really need to feel like, uh, I'm back in my place, because for a lot of our, our kids in, in Westwood, school's their place. So we want that to be that welcoming back environment with the, um, just really supporting that emotional piece in moving into the acad- academics as well, but moving in a little bit more gradually in the first couple of weeks of school so we can really gauge our students and our staffs as we, as they too, um, transition to a new model of learning. So for the staff, like Scott had said, we had, we are planning, um, some professional development for our staff, we're working on that piece. We're also creating a teacher toolbox, uh, teaching resources. And like you said, we want to have these things embedded. And you can probably go to any of our schools and you will see this type of learning can be embedded within our school day and it's already being done. So it's having that extra time to meet with staff, talk with staff and provide those professional op- um, development opportunities that they can share with their students and again, taking care of them and ourselves. So one of my, my favorite parts of the, the plan as we talk about self-care, um, for all of us, and one of the parts is like, what is self-care? That might be leaving the building at four-thirty instead of six-thirty one afternoon and really working with each other to say, it's okay, you can go home and take care of yourself, because when you come back, you can be ready to take care of the kids of Western Public Schools again in the morning. So our focus is to really, um, address those social emotional concerns for both our students, staff and our families. And as a committee, we're continued and we're dedicated to developing the teacher toolbox and designing the professional development as we move forward with social emotional learning.
Sharon, may I ask you and Scott for one second? Because I know that you were, uh, you and Wendy Pukachek and your committee was excited about this, uh, the Panorama Assessment Tool that, um, you have recommended and that we will be purchasing?
Yes, so this, the Panorama, uh, Wendy Pukachek brought that up at our committee and she's done an amazing amount of research on that piece. We, we can't thank her enough. And she brought it to our attention. She's, um, watched some webinars, she's done some talking with the company, actually a lot of talking with the company. It's a platform that has a variety of instruments designed to help educators act on the data from the student outcomes. So it can identify the strengths in areas for growth and grit, growth, growth mindset, self-management, social awareness, self-efficacy and other areas. So it allows us to assess by school, by district, by, and by specific groups. So it has, it's evidence-based, it's, it's aligned with CASL, which is the collaborative for academic, social and emotional learning. There are Massachusetts schools that are currently using it in Boston Public Schools, Springfield, Framingham, Cambridge, Andover, Brookline, Waltham and Worcester. It's affiliated with the Harvard School of, um, Graduate School of Education. And there have been over three million students surveyed nationwide. It's also partners with Move This World, Teaching Toler- Tolerance and Second Step. And one of the things about when you do the assessments and you gather the data from, from Panorama, there are toolboxes for the teachers embedded within the tool. So you might pull up a lesson and say, oh, I need something on anxiety. And it will give you some tips and lessons on how to address anxiety in the classroom. So it's a continued discussion that we, we, we'll be talking about, um, with you Superintendent Olson. And Wendy has reached out some more to Panorama to get some more details on what does the PD look like, because there's a PD component. And what will that look like to roll it out within Western Public Schools if we go choose that avenue?
Terrific, thank you. And, uh, next slide, Chris, if you would?
So we did talk a little bit about, oops, sorry. All right, hygiene, you're on.
Were you going to say something else, Sharon?
No, I thought we, I looked up because I was so focused on my notes that we're still there. I'm like, oh, we did touch base on the, um, teacher toolbox.
All right, I'll ask the subcommittee, uh, was the hygiene protocols facilities? And I'd like to cover with you some of the topics that were discussed and some of the things we're going to do to help protect, uh, students and staff. And keeping in mind that this is kind of the five thousand-foot level. Detail is in the report itself. So Chris, if I could have the next slide? We have already invested in a significant amount of, uh, personal protective equipment. As you know, the DESC has recommended that staff bring their own masks and that parents send their children to school with masks of their own. Um, certainly looking for that. Hello, however, we, we do recognize that sometimes eavesdrops will break. Uh, masks, particularly the, the cloth, uh, cloth nature might tear. We have extras on hand and plenty of extras. Uh, we've come up with detailed cleaning and disinfecting procedures. Um, I will be looking to hire some additional custodial help during the day, the day shift and the evening shift to clean specifically devoted to cleaning and disinfecting surfaces, particularly high-contact surfaces such as doorknobs, certain tables, um, and, and doors themselves. Uh, we are having an HVAC analysis done of the operating condition of our air handling equipment and a baseline air quality test, uh, will be accomplished. Our director of facilities, Paul Fox, has been excellent in securing quotes based on the specifications that we have articulated. Uh, because we want to make sure the staff and the students and the parents know that our, our air is safe. Uh, we have always been responsible in terms of testing air quality, uh, abating anything that is of a hazardous nature for the last thirty to thirty-five years. And, uh, we won't stop that, that dedication to a health, uh, healthy and safe work environment and education environment. Uh, we, uh, are having a caring room. Uh, the DESC calls it in its documents, isolation room. We are not using that language. It is a caring room where children, if they present symptoms during the school day, will, uh, just wait for their parents to, to pick them up. Okay, and so, um, it will be a designated area. It cannot be the nurse's office, but each, uh, each building has designated a particular area. Uh, we pay close attention to distancing throughout the day, whether it's in the classroom or any type of transition to a bathroom break. Uh, we, we are still awaiting, uh, guidance from the state fire marshal's office in terms of how fire drills will be handled in terms of the, the need to, to exit a building, but accompanied by distancing, if that's what the state fire marshal's office is, is looking at. So we're still awaiting that. Um, we are specifying the protocols that will take place if a virus is detected in a student or a staff member. Now, we've reviewed that carefully with the, uh, Westwood Health Department, um, Jeff Stevens and also Nurse Gail Johnson. Uh, we've had, we have a very, uh, very responsible board of health and, uh, and a staff of employees in that department. And they've been of great assistance to us. Uh, we know what to do if a child should exhibit symptoms and then is tested as positive. There's a specific set of protocols that is in the domain of the Westwood Health Department, not ours, but the Health Department. And we follow those procedures and protocols, uh, that will be in place. Same thing if a staff member were to present, um, a positive, uh, reading on a, on a virus. There is information in our report also in terms of what happens if, uh, a family member at home has, uh, has presented positive for the COVID virus. What is quarantine period? What is the out-of-school period? Uh, and that is in the, uh, that is in the report. We want to do everything according to the book in terms of the health and safety guidance from CDC, MassDPH and our local health department. Uh, in terms of illness screening, we will not be screening, uh, students as they enter in the morning, uh, in accordance with, um, Department of Education guidance. Uh, there was originally some thought back about eight weeks ago that, uh, we would be doing thermal imaging of students coming into the building to detect any elevated temperatures. But because of the false positives and false negatives that have occurred, that will not be done. And we are asking parents in the report to monitor their children each day. And if they're ill to, eh, eh, to any degree, please, please do not send them to school. And the same thing with the staff member. Make sure that we specify to the staff, if you are feeling ill, do not come to the building. Okay? Next slide, uh, Chris?
That's the end of the slides.
So where are our next steps from here? Well, our next steps are to take input and questions from the school committee, uh, questions from all of you in the, in the public. Uh, we will be doing another survey, uh, very soon, hopefully this week, of the parents. Uh, yes, another survey, but now that you know what the plan is that reopening committee has proposed, we're going to survey you again in terms of whether you feel comfortable with your child returning to school with the safeguards that we have included in the plan or whether you want your child educated remotely. All right? Uh, we will ask for the child's name and grade level, because that will help us in planning. Okay, in terms of establishing classes, uh, in terms of what physical spacing we can, we can utilize. Um, we will also be, um, surveying the staff. We had a negotiations session, uh, of about three hours this morning with the Westwood Education Association Negotiations Committee. Uh, I will actually be, uh, meeting with the, uh, subcommittee, okay, the consultation committee that, uh, assists us in the development of a school calendar. Uh, what I'm going to do is I am going to, uh, talk with them, with other administrators, about a revised school calendar before we present it to you. Uh, I can't say that all of the additional days that the commissioner has now reallocated from instruction to activities such as professional development, can't say that all of those will be front-loaded at the beginning of the year. But I also want to talk with the WEA Consultation Committee about the survey that will be immediately issued to our staff also, to make sure they are comfortable with the questions that we are asking, soliciting the information that we absolutely need to know and asking for their input or any suggestions on how to make the survey more accurate and more reflective of the thoughts of our staff. Uh, because we're asking them to come back to work. Uh, yes, it will be a reduced schedule, uh, that is by design to minimize contact, to minimize the discomfort. The students and staff are wearing masks, a mask for six hours a day to minimize the, as Chris Chu said, the contact that could potentially, potentially be, uh, you know, concerning in a cafeteria where students have to have their masks off. So we've designed this for a reason and all of the components to fit together from all of the subcommittees. And once again, I want to thank them for an incredible job. As you know, we were able to distribute this to you last Friday and to the public on Saturday. And we hope many parents have had a chance to read through. And with that, we will stop and begin to answer questions. Uh, some answers we may not have tonight, but, uh, we'll have as many as we possibly can.
Um, thank you, Bill, and thank you to all of the presenters and all of the staff members who, um, spent a lot of time putting this, uh, report together for us. Um, as I indicated at the beginning, um, we're, we're going to try to go around our virtual table here and, um, allow all of the committee members to have, um, a few minutes to kind of, um, give your initial thoughts or initial questions. But, um, we also want to leave, leave plenty of time for, um, community questions and concerns. And the list is very long. We have a lot of questions. Uh, we're not going to be able to get to all of them tonight. Uh, what I think we're going to try and do i- is go through and, um, pick out the, the common themes that we're seeing, um, repeated questions, um, from several parents. Um, if there's a particular question that really applies to, to your child or your specific situation, I do encourage you to follow up after this meeting, send that question, um, to your building principal or, um, to the appropriate, um, person who might be able to help you with your specialized concern. Um, but we're, we're really going to try and, and touch on the high-level, big themes here. So, um, we'll start with, um, committee, um, members and I think we'll, we'll go in seniority order. And Avery, that means you're at first.
Okay, thank you. Um, I want to echo what you had said, uh, thanking all of the staff and teachers and administration for hours and hours of meetings and work in, in compiling this document. Uh, I had the opportunity to sit in on two of the subcommittees and I was so impressed with the conversation and the thought. Uh, the real dedication was really shining through in all of it. And I, I thank all of them for that. Um, I was especially appreciative of the social and emotional that, as Sharon and, and, uh, others had echoed tonight, was that that really needs to be first and foremost in any of our plans. Um, no matter whether we're remote, hybrid or full-in, um, the, the social and emotional, I feel, really needs to be, be number one as our concern for these kids who could be terrified going back to school and could be terrified staying home for more time. So, um, and that goes to staff as well. They, they were honest with concerns about the staff as well. So they looked at all of it. Um, as far as the model, I am happy with the hybrid at this time. I do think it is a nice middle. Uh, we've been getting a lot of emails and, and input, um, all in, all out. Um, and so I, I do think that we're trying to pull the best of both sides into this hybrid model. I'll let Chris go.
Chris wasn't ready to go yet, but okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll share that I, um, it's a challenge and I was pretty pleased with what I saw. And I just want to also recognize just how hard this is for everybody and that there, we've said this before, there is no good answer. And it just makes it really hard. And I think, um, this plan does a pretty good job of satisfying a, a lot of the needs that we have. Um, I think we have a ways to go on, on fine-tuning and there are some questions. And I'll, so I'll just hit a couple, I don't know if these are questions or suggestions, um, that I want to bring up. The first is, and this may change based on whatever new guidance the state might be giving on later, you know, starting September fifteenth. But based on a September third start, I have a concern about, um, families who are out and about and traveling and seeing relatives and seeing friends. And then everybody comes back on September second and comes to school the next day. And so I would advocate for a two-week period of family self-quarantining before we do anything in-person, otherwise I have concerns. Um, I will point out, you have so many things pulling us in different directions, whether pulling us towards remote or pulling us towards in-person. We have really low case numbers in, in the county, but especially in the town. You know, the tr- community spread is low right now. But we also haven't had school and that could contribute to that. At the same time, you look at the Miami Marlins who just had fourteen players and coaches, um, diagnosed with COVID, and you don't want that to happen. So there's a lot of unknown. So obviously, that's what we're all trying to juggle and balance. Um, I will throw this out because we worked so hard last year on looking at later start times. It seems to me that a lot of the things that ha- prevented us from doing later start times for our middle schoolers and high schoolers, um, maybe have gone away for the time being. Things like sports schedules. Um, so I would encourage us, if there's a way to shift, if there's a way to, with low impact, do later start times while it's not a high priority. I think it, it might be something pretty doable. I wanted to throw that out there. And lastly, um, I wanted to ask if it's possible to look at, um, making the remote model and the hybrid model not so different, different in their schedule such that we could more easily transition between them if the need be. And I think what that might look like is more synchronous, um, learning and more, you know, you have Pod A and Pod B more matching up where when Pod A is in school and Pod B is at home, they're both doing learning at the same time synchronously with the teacher, with a, with a, a camera in the classroom on the teacher. And so that's something I would throw out as a suggestion that might ease transitions between the models. Uh, I have a lot of other questions and comments, but I will yield.
Alicia, are you up next?
I think I am. So I want to echo that I appreciate all of the work that went into this. I know that there is quite literally, there's no, there is no answer that does not involve a time machine and a pile of money to solve all of these problems. There is no model that is perfect for everyone. It's going to be tough for everyone. But I appreciate that we're trying to work in as many groups and concerns as possible into the model itself. I think the only way we're going to be able to make this work is by collaborating. My biggest concerns, I would say, are around communication and timelines. I think part of the biggest problem we had in the spring was, we just didn't know. Every time we turned around, the state was saying something else and we were shutting down for a week. We were shutting down for two weeks. We were shutting down for a month. And I think that contributed to a lot of the chaos that families felt. So I think as clear as we can possibly be with parents about what the timelines will look like, what the schedules will look like, what the expectations are, who they can communicate with. We talk all the time about Sharon Cannelli's fantastic Who Even A Call from Christopher Lee. The telephone, what I have a question about. If there's a way to make who parents can contact with their questions extremely clear on our site. I also have concerns around transition. I have a child who has trouble with transitions. I've seen many parents talking about transitions being something they're extremely concerned about. If we can communicate how those transitions will be addressed for the students who are struggling. When, I would also, I know this is not an answer for tonight, but by the time we meet again next week, and I think we're very lucky to have a meeting immediately next week, I would like to know when parents can expect certain things. When can they expect to hear from their team meetings about what their services look like for their IEP kids? When can parents be expected to have to answer about the bus times, uh, sorry, whether or not their children will ride the bus? So I think what I'd like to see in the next week or so is if we can kind of get all that information together. Who you're going, the who, what, when, where, why? Who are you going to talk to? When do you need to let people know things? You know, what the details are so that the parents feel like they can make the best decisions possible. I will.
Ming Chen, you're up next.
I want to actually, I collaborate, I was saying that first, I want to actually really appreciate the administration, all the teachers, everybody on the committee to actually to go through all those processes, come up with a plan. This is a really bad situation because we have to actually talk about how to reopen school. That's bad. So I'm actually having an engineering background. So I'm looking things more from an engineer point of view. When there is a, when there is a problem facing us, there are many ways to solve the problem, right? There is no single answer. It could be fully remote. It could be like a hybrid. It could be like fully in person. Each model will solve a different use case or different scenario. All of them could be a right answer. Or and then, and then a lot of times when we actually are looking into the system design, and then there are multiple answers, basically you are actually picking answers based on trade offs because every answer could work. So. So then let's talk about the problem we are facing in Westford because that's the problem we're going to solve. We're not going to, we're not trying to solve the problem in Arizona or not trying to solve the problem in Boston. I know that the superintendent mentioned that now with one more survey going out to actually figure out who is going to actually really want to send their kids back to school, who absolutely will not send their kids back to school or who are actually be comfortable being in between. That's actually one other thing which a few weeks ago, people sending some of the, filled out some of the surveys. And then I would like some kind of answers on that survey regarding how many people says not going to send back their kids to school so that we know that, for example, how many kids are going to actually be back in school? So we know the targeted audience. And then the other question I really have is that what metrics are we really using for the recommendation versus fully remote versus fully in person? And then, I know, is this model going to be for the entire year? Well, what metrics we're going to be using to say, hey, this is this matrix, and then we have to actually go to fully remote? What if we achieve this matrix, then we're going to actually go fully in person? And then, and then, and then, and then we were hoping for vaccine to come out. But I don't know. I don't know if there is a vaccine. And then if this continues for next, are we going to actually have kids actually in the limbo for the next, next school year? Right? So, so really, I want to say clear metrics because, for example, without, without any new cases or with certain number of new cases, it's hard to tell whether, whether the model presented gave me some, some answer regarding when we're going to actually move to a different model or when we're going to actually retrieve to a different model. So I would like to actually to get more clarity on that one. And then I know that the pandemic is hard. A lot of families have been suffering financially and physically. People pay a premium to actually to live in Westford. And that's a fact. Westford is expensive to live in. As a working parent, I'm really, really concerned about how I can actually make this work for families. So what are going to do with our kids between the on week and off week? Between going back home around like lunchtime? And now who is going to be in the house? Who is going to take care of the kids? Who is going to help them? So with like a quarter of the time in, in the classroom, a quarter of the time doing remote learning, and then the other half of the time basically now on their own. So, so what are we going to do to help all those parents that cannot stay at home? And then, and a lot of big concern I really have really is that it doesn't really matter whether the kids are actually staying in the classroom for three hours, not having lunch versus whole day. I don't, I think, I don't, I don't know how much, they're still being exposed to the same risk. Maybe to a lesser extent, but they're still being exposed to a risk. So, so it doesn't actually really, really reduce the risk problem too much or compared to fully remote. But it doesn't also actually provide the whole in-person, the near occurrence. So it's hard. I just don't know what to say. It's like, there is no perfect solution. And then, and I'm really concerned about the hybrid model as well. I think those questions, I don't have an answer. And I really would like the superintendent to clarify some of the metrics, some of the results. And then the other thing I really want to stress is that I would have more confidence in remote if we actually tried it in the spring. I think in this meeting, I don't even remember how many times I stressed that we need to actually try something different. We need to adjust so that we, we learn something so that we can be prepared for the, in the fall. But we didn't do any adjustment in the spring. I was frustrated because I know that in the fall, remote probably is going to be an option. And then, and then, and then we could have used that time to actually to learn and adjust. So, so I don't know what the remote option is going to look like, the remote academy look like without actually properly going through this like practice or it just, it just really unfair to put our teachers on the spot, say, hey, go, go find out, figure out how to actually do remote. I hope in the fall it's going to be better. But on the other hand, really like teaching remote versus teaching in person, that's, that's, that's a very different skill size. So. Yeah, it's, I just don't have the answers, but I have a million questions. I, I just don't think like I should move, use more time. I want, I want that committee to continue.
Thanks, Ming Chen. I understand the feeling. A million questions. I think we all have them. Sean, what are a few of your million?
I'll try to keep it brief. Like the others have said, Superintendent Nelson, thanks. Then thank you to you and to the staff and to everyone who put this together. This was far more comprehensive than I expected personally, and I expected a lot. So my concerns are surrounding the boots on the ground here, right? Our teachers and their well-being and our staff, really. Everyone who's going to be in there implementing this plan. We know for one thing that the union had voted for something other than in person. We haven't pulled them since, right? So we don't have a clear picture on where they would stand as to this type of hybrid model. So I'd be interested to see that. And I know that's something that Superintendent Nelson and I have discussed. So the, one of the reasons why this is so tough, right, is because we don't really know what's safe. There's not a clear plan as to this. I mean, we have reports from other countries and things like that. But you know, what works in one place is, it doesn't necessarily work in Westford. So, and then the other thing is, is anyone who hasn't been in this school, I mean, the schools during the day can be future dishes, right? And that's, that's putting it lightly. I, my, again, going back to my concern about the staff, I keep telling myself, like, can I, and I know this is doom and gloom, but could I comfortably live with knowing if one of our staff members ended up on like a ventilator or something like that, or one of their family members? And that is a very, very difficult pill to swallow. So, but the counter to that is, right? If we do a fully remote scenario, then we're doing a disservice to our most vulnerable populations of students. Our special needs kids, our alt ed kiddos, and particularly the younger population is not going to be able to benefit as much from a remote. So there's this, there's this balance that we have to have here. And another point that Ming Chen alluded to is working parents, right? And this is a societal problem that we have insofar that we've. Our concern is, is daycare problem, right? It's, it's a daycare problem. That's a government issue. That's not a problem for the teachers. And I know that's going to be an unpopular opinion, but it's my view. It's not their problem. Nonetheless, I certainly think that I can get behind this if we have some more input from our, our, our staff, right? And I think that we will have that within the next few weeks. And obviously, we're getting state guidance day by day, so this, this plan is going to change a little. And then also, I believe it was Alicia and Ming Chen alluded to metrics, right? We got to have metrics somewhere. I think particularly for me, the most important metric would be if we started a hybrid, what metrics need to occur for us to end up remote, right? Are we talking about within the town, within a certain school, within, you know? And hopefully, that's something that we can flesh out as we get move, move along with this plan. And again, Bill, I hold faith in you. I know you're an honest guy. So I think it's just something that we need to flush out so we can give parents, you know, an idea of what we'd be looking for if we ended up, if we went from hybrid to remote. And then a related topic is, how quickly can we do that, right? How quickly can we turn from hybrid to fully remote? I mean, that's, that's another concern of mine. So that's all that I have for the meantime. I don't want to take into anyone else's time. Thank you.
Valerie?
I'm going to skip the thank yous because everyone has done that. But I did think that the chunk of pages on social emotional learning spoke to our district's value on that, which I thought was very telling. I especially loved the mention of kind of creative ideas to give kids closure from last year's teachers. But ultimately, when I read the plan, you know, I'm no expert. So I tried to bucket a lot of the concerns I was hearing and see what I could kind of dig in about those. For the safety point of view, I turned to, I mean, there, you could read studies all day and, you know, the CDC and the WHO, but I turned to the town health director and I spoke with some school nurses and they aligned on six feet masks and hand hygiene being the way forward. So, so that's kind of, that's where I'm at with safety. I've heard a lot of concerns that school would be different. I've even heard it be described as a cold place. You know, it's not going to be what we're used to. So for that, I reached out to the director of the Kids League, which has been running for the past three weeks, the director of the Childcare Frost School at Roden Bush, and talked to her, which has been running for the past three weeks. And they have all radiated positivity. They're talking about the students thriving, that parents are seeing a difference at home based on the students being in the programs. So that to me tells me it's worth trying. I'm also concerned as a parent, I want my child's teacher to feel confident. So I'm concerned about what we can do to help the teachers feel prepared. And, you know, whether that 170 day calendar adjustment can help with that. I'm very concerned about working families. You know, it might not be a problem for sixth grade and up or, or, sorry, however old you start leaving your kids home alone, forgive me for not knowing that yet. But so, and even if that's not the schools, even if we can't tackle that problem, I don't think that I can get behind a plan that just throws our hands up at that problem. So whether that's a community solution with Parks and Recs or Roden Bush or Kids League, you know, it seems like in my conversations with people, it seems like a lot of places are potentially available to do some sort of early dismissal program. So at least that may help the kids that are in the school week. I don't think of any, I don't think there's any school age program in town that would be ready to help on the home week in that morning slot, but maybe that's, you know, helping working families somewhat. As a data-driven person, I'm also looking for the metrics. Who are we, you know, that really needs to be in black and white? What, what line do we cross to say we're shifting models? And from what I understand, we're in a pretty good place now. So to me, that says, let's try it out and almost talk about what it would look like to ramp up and use the fall like we won't have the winter. And what can we kind of soak up in that time? I'm also really disappointed in the kindergarten proposal. I don't know what the solution is. You know, I, I'm sure that if I, if we could give you unlimited money, you could think of a different kindergarten proposal. But, but those are, those are our new, that's our foundation of the district. And what we might be cutting a corner or, you know, I'm sure that it comes down to, we're not charging for full day kindergarten, so we don't have that revenue coming in. But whatever we're, whatever it costs that comes out to be, I think we're going to be paying for that as those kids age into first grade and later and need the supports later that we didn't build this foundation this year. I'm also concerned that that staff now is being, you know, offered a part-time position. And if they decline that, now are we looking at shuffling in a whole new kindergarten? Shuffling in a whole new kindergarten team? So that's a concern for me. I'd also like to see, um, you know, with the metrics, like trying, what's our strong backup plan? Um, you know, I understand kind of waiting to see how things shuffle out to work on the Remote Learning Academy. But a lot of that will cross over into what we're planning for the remote part of the hybrid. So it makes sense to me to be working on that in the background, that could be happening, I just, you know, I'm I'm looking to see that answered. And for, I don't know if you mentioned um, for next steps, but I would love to see maybe another parent forum. Maybe broken down by grade level. And just so that we can, I, one thing I heard over and over again, as I talked all weekend long to different people. Was just wanting to feel heard and validated. This is such an uncertain time, you know, like everyone has said, there is no perfect solution. You know, and and everyone is facing unprecedented family situations and sacrifices, and I think everyone, we would just do well to. Listen to a lot of the emotions and feelings and stories behind, behind that, thank you.
Um, I know we also have um, student representatives here tonight, I don't want to put uh, you on the spot, Brian or Hannah, but um, do you have comments or questions at this point?
I I definitely don't have any like questions, I think the uh, hybrid model is like a gray um, in-between for both worlds. Ideally, me personally, I would love to just go back like as if we were all normal, but of course, that's not a reality. And of course, it's also not a reality, just do fully remote. Because I think it's important to look back in the springtime and see how that fully remote actually worked. Because I know a lot of kids had a lot of like struggles with that, so it could be a good change of pace for the hybrid, or I'm not sure, but I, it could be um. Sorry, I lost my train of thought, but springtime wasn't the easiest fully remote, so I definitely think the hybrid is a good idea.
Thanks, Brian. Hannah, you wanna chime in?
Um, yeah, I agree with Brian, I think a lot of students are ready to go back to some type of normal schedule. Um, I think my biggest concern is probably that there's a lot of anxiety and stress surrounding this plan and going back. And um, I guess I'm just wondering how. It's realistically gonna look in the fall when we go back, at least for high school, because I think. This is definitely gonna be a really difficult adjustment for a lot of kids and teachers too. But I think the hybrid plan sounds like a good. Decision now to keep everyone safe. I guess I'm just really anxious to get back, especially with sports and things, which I know can't happen right now, but hopefully soon.
Thank you. The benefit of batting cleanup is all the good questions have already been asked. I think. Everyone's acknowledged um, the huge amount of work that went into preparing these plans. Um, I think the state um, has given local school districts an impossible task of preparing. Three plans, figure out how they would all work, give us where you're leaning, and we're not providing you with the budgetary support to. Um, potentially make any of them work, because the state legislature hasn't uh, released our budget numbers for the new fiscal year. So we are, we are facing huge challenges. No plan is perfect. The situation is far from perfect, we all know that. Our role is to determine how to best educate the students of Westford. To the best of our capabilities under these extraordinary circumstances. It it's easy to to um, find find fault in any particular plan. And it's really hard to make it work, but I I do think that as a community, if we um. And and I'll I'll just say, I I I've seen some some discussion on social media that has been really disturbing and somewhat disheartening. Um, that pits teachers against medical professionals, working parents against stay-at-home parents. This isn't about one group versus another group, this is about the Westford community coming together to try and figure out. How do we best educate our children and keep the children, our staff? All of their families and the entire broader Westford community safe? And um. I I I commend um, the the development of this plan, we're now gonna ask a whole lot of questions. Um, because that's kind of our role is is to vet the plan and um, determine how is this gonna work from a budgetary perspective? How is it, how does this work from policy, how do, how do we um, make this work for our staff? How do we make this work for for all of our families? So we're gonna launch into all the questions. Um, I will, I will, I will clarify, um, if anyone is is sitting there nervous, and I apologize, I should have clarified this at the very beginning. There will be no votes taken tonight, as the superintendent indicated, um, these are, these are draft plans. Um, these are initial plans that are being submitted to the state per their request. Um, the superintendent has made a recommendation to us, but there are no final decisions, there are no final plans at this point. There will be no votes taken by the committee tonight, those will start to ha- to happen likely, because the timeline will dictate it. Um, at our meeting next week, so with that in mind. Bill, do you want to make some initial responses to everything that that the committee has discussed and put forward so far, and then we'll turn to the public questions?
Sure, um. You all um, have been very accurate in your assessment that. This plan will be favorable to some and not favorable to others. And it would, it would be the same situation if I had recommended fully remote uh, or full return. A lot of you are looking to metrics, what I will use. Is I will use uh, CDC information. Uh, more importantly, I will use Mass Department of Public Health information, and even more important than that. I will use the Westford Board of Health and Health Department information to make a determination on. If and when a shift is needed, and we'll unlikely, uh, more than likely, excuse me, receive some guidance from the commissioner. But I'm, my job is to pay attention to what's happening in Westford. I I know that have been, there's been research and studies in different European uh, and countries in the Far East, that's nice, but that's not Westford. And so what I want to do is rely on the data that we receive, or look at the DPH dashboard of data. Which is always very helpful, but I look to the local board of health and the our health department workers to interpret that for me and say. What does it look like in terms of the trends? Has the risk level changed at all, has it diminished, or has it, has it increased? What happens if we do have some some cases? Uh, is it one or two, is it ten, twenty, thirty? Although the incidence is very low right now of cases in in Westford. So the metrics um, will, will definitely uh, be from mostly local information, statewide information. I think it's a good idea to be in touch with the parents again, and by various grade spans in another forum. Uh, we are going to, as I said, survey. Uh, we intend to have that out this week, so we can have some results in, it'd be a quick turnaround. Or results hopefully for next Monday, uh, Monday night in full or in part. We're gonna survey our staff also, I wanna talk with WEH tomorrow in terms of the questions we'll be asking, one of the questions. That you brought up, or one of the issues that you brought up that we'll be asking, we discussed it today in one of our leadership team meetings. Is what type of professional development as a staff member? K to two, three to five, six to eight, nine to twelve, what type of professional development will be the most helpful to you? Uh, in terms of the return to school and during the school year, what can we help you with the most to make you feel comfortable? Make you feel safe and to allow you to do your job as effectively as as possible? Uh, we will put together a document. That Alicia, you mentioned uh, in terms of who to contact if you have a question. And what type of question goes to to whom? Because I think um, I think that's very important. This is a large system, this is a larger system than many in Massachusetts. Once you put aside the urban areas, uh, you know, when I go around to the state and have for years and talk with people and they say, where do you work? I said, in Westford. And uh, they ask, well, what's your enrollment, a thousand or fifteen hundred? And when I tell them, years passed, when it was over five thousand, they found it hard to believe, but it's a big community. And there's a lot of questions from parents that we need to answer. How long will it take to change from one model to the next? Well, we'd like to give the staff um, at least two to three weeks. Um, and I I will talk with our uh, leadership team meeting, uh, leadership team group and our reopening committee more on this, but I. It's not something that can can have a two or three day turnaround. This, we need to make the staff feel comfortable. You know, Ming-Ten, one of the things that you mentioned uh, last spring is. We need to make sure that the remote component is more robust and more more consistent. This time around, and we want to make sure whether that's the first day of school or the hundredth day of school. Uh, we want to make sure that it's it, it looks and feels and is better than than the extraordinary efforts the staff put in 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 the spring. I don't, I will not for one second diminish anything they did, uh, because they worked their heads off to make. Things happen for students under extraordinarily difficult conditions. Valerie, I I I know that the kindergarten issue is a very large issue. And I, I don't have a good answer for you at this point in time, if we had more buses to do a separate kindergarten run in in the middle of the. The day or the end of the day for kindergarten, that would be one thing, but we've already been told by the bus company. Don't expect any more buses, even if you had a million dollars, we can't provide them uh, to you because of the the queue time that it takes, and. The issue that um, drivers, the number of drivers may very well be an issue facing us. Let me just take a quick look at the notes that I've taken here for a second. You've mentioned survey, you've mentioned metrics. What can we do to help teachers, well, we're gonna, we're gonna find that out, not only through a survey, but from face-to-face conversations. Okay, a survey is, we will do to get quick data. But I want to have those conversations, I want all of us to have those conversations with the teachers. That we've had for so many years that have built up a culture of trust and respect. And in the school system that has worked so well. They're the ones who carry the load. They're the ones who give us the reputation that we have earned in in the Western public schools, and so. They're the ones we need to listen to, okay? You know, I'll I'll be glad to continue on as the weeks go on in terms of health and safety measures, more information, I'll do some more videos uh, for parents. Um, we'll do some more forums, and um, you know, I certainly understand the level of anxiety. That exists not only in Western, but throughout this entire country. With that anxiety, unfortunately, comes some incivility in terms of communication, particularly on social media. Let's keep the conversation civil and respectful and productive, and that's the most important thing to to all of us in the school system. Nothing is perfect, absolutely nothing is perfect about this plan, but to me and to the rest of the committee. It is, is the, it is the best alternative to propose to you at this time.
Thank you, Bill, um, I've been trying to monitor the queue while lifting to all of your comments, and we have nearly two hundred questions in the queue. Obviously, we're not gonna be able to get to all of these tonight, so we are trying to go through and pick out common themes. Um, there are definitely commonalities of concerns that um, parents and community members have. So um, you may not hear your question red word for word, but we're we're gonna try and um, get as many in as possible. Um, I think as as may have been suggested here tonight, um, I know we have our meeting next Monday night, but um, perhaps we do need another forum, or perhaps. Uh, we need a frequently asked question, um, or something, um, a document that can go out to parents that kind of catches these themes. And tries to address some of the frequently asked questions, um, and maybe that will help, Hannah, did you have a comment?
Um, I just got a quick question, I think this might have been mentioned earlier, but um. We're gonna have normal grading this fall with the remote, because I know that was like a really big concern in the spring, since it was credit, no credit. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, there is going to be grading, Hannah, uh, attendance will be a requirement and also grading.
Um, Bill, since since you mentioned um, attendance, how, uh, one of the questions was, how will attendance be handled for students who are in their? B pod, a- a- asynchronous week, how how does attendance get handled for those students?
Well, the, most teachers will be able to tell in terms of the level of engagement, uh, what types of assignment or these assignments that have either been submitted or not submitted. Uh, check-ins with the students from time to time, and how much engage and engagement there will be. Uh, that's one of the things that the Teaching and Learning Committee uh, has been working on, uh, we're working on that with the uh. We're gonna work on that with the WEA Consult Committee also, that's that's part of negotiations, uh, because it it is somewhat of a change in in the working conditions, so. Uh, but there, just like in the springtime, uh, teachers were able to assess, and principals were also. Uh, how engaged or non-engaged were various students, and whether's, were their assignments being submitted? Were they being submitted on time or submitted at all? And so um, we will be more specific as we go through this process towards the school year. Because it's a component that we need to talk with with the with the WA also in terms of what's it, what's it going to look like? And uh, what's what's the teacher's role going to going to continue to be, the administration's role going to continue to be in attendance?
So there there were um, there were certainly some questions about remote learning in the fall versus what occurred in in the spring. Um, there were definitely some concerns expressed that maybe um, remote learning didn't work well for their student, or their student struggled with it. Whether whether we're talking about the remote aspect for students in the hybrid model, or. For students who need it for for um.
Remote Learning Academy?
The Remote Learning Academy, how will, how will remote learning in those situations look different from what happened in the spring?
I'll I'll give you a kind of a five hundred foot uh, level, and uh, Chris and others on the Teaching and Learning Committee, if you wanna uh, chip in. First of all, uh, we're going to make sure it's it's more robust and it's more consistent. Uh, one of the things that the state is looking at, now, we we were waiting for information, the state has put out bids, solicited bids for. Uh, a student learning, teaching and learning platform. We don't know whether that's going to be recommended in terms of content, that will deal with content only, not professional development, we will be responsible for PD. But uh, we're going to take um. We're gonna take the lessons learned in the spring, and through the curriculum coordinators and and Carrie and the principals. Make sure we meet thoroughly with the staff, that clear expectations are understood in terms of consistency and the content, the amount of time of engagement. Everybody did an excellent job, uh, to the greatest extent possible on the difficult conditions. But I I recognize, as well as you, uh, and and the staff also, that there was some inconsistency in terms of the content. And the delivery of that content, and that's what we're looking to to uh, to modify. Uh, Chris, uh, anyone else on the teaching?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna chime in, um, Bill, and just say that a a big, a big difference is the amount of synchronous time that we're looking to schedule into. The, any of the remote versions. The idea of, that also helps to deal with the attendance piece as well, because you did talk about putting, you know, with it, when students are turning in assignments and that engagement, but also. you know, with it, when students are turning in assignments and that engagement, but also with the expectation that, that certain classes, they are meeting synchronously even remotely. That's another piece of where attendance would just be taken on it, on a daily basis. But we talked about the way in which we could be, helping to, uh, to, to support the program that we did have in the spring. And the biggest amount of feedback was the need for more synchronous activities, the need for teachers and students and students with each other to be able to meet together online. And so the hybrid, all of our models that involve remote learning have that component embedded into it in ways that we didn't have in the spring. So we're looking at being able to having more time to, to, to look at schedules and to be able to say, we can organize this amount of time so that they'll be able to come together and meet at the same time. One of the questions that I know someone had mentioned also about the Remote Learning Academy. And so we're looking to make a more robust opportunity with the Remote Learning Academy. One of the things that the Teaching and Learning Group talked about initially was just even the idea that even as it is looking at our hybrid model, we could be looking at a C pod, you know, we have learning pod A, we have learning pod B. We could also be looking at the, the complete fully remote group of students as a C pod that then is also connecting with the A pod in the B pod in the remote environment on a regular basis so that they're still connected. That's one of those pieces that, um, I do, I do think one of the school committee members, um, mentioned as well too. We've been talking about that. We're actually trying to see if with the full Remote Learning Academy, if we can, because those students would not be benefiting from any of the in-person instruction. So we wanted to see, okay, what else can we do to be adding to that model? So that they're not just participating in the afternoon live synchronous remote sessions, if that makes sense.
Um, I, I think there, there definitely could be a, a, a lot more questions about the Remote Learning Academy, but, um, but let, let's circle back if it's okay to the, the big picture schedule that's being recommended in, in the hybrid model. And I think there's a lot of concern from working parents about how are they going to make this work? So there, there's a whole series of questions about why did, um, the Teaching and Learning Committee opt for this model with the early release every other week schedule instead of, um, some of the other models that, parents are hearing that surrounding communities may have opted for like full days, but two days in the building, two days out of the building. Other, other alternatives like that. Or, um, one of the other questions was, if we're doing alternating weeks, why not full days in the building one week and then fully remote the following week? So that, that was definitely, definitely a theme. What, how did this model rise to the top versus the alternatives that some other communities may be doing?
Honestly, lunches, lunches were a, a huge piece of that because the lunches require twenty-five minutes at least of no masks. Yes, even spacing them out in the cafeteria if we're able to fit everybody that was in there in the cafeteria. Plus the amount of time that would be required for us to extend or create new lunch blocks for everybody in order to fit them in. That was a, that was a huge piece of the discussion that we had. We did talk about week on, week off. We talked about two days on, two days off. We talked about every other day. We, we, we looked at a number of different scenarios and talked them through. And we had representation from every single building level on the, um, on the committee. And some of the things we talked about was, well, this, this works ideally at one grade level, but it didn't work at the other grade level. And when we started really looking at the difference between the continuity that, that exists in a, in a one week on model versus an every other day model. That seemed to be the, the, the thing that everybody kept, um, coming to more specifically. I know, um, perhaps some of the other people who are joining us can, can chime in too. I know, um, Ms. McDermott was, was a part of these discussions as well too. And she might have a, a different perspective from the elementary level.
No, I think you're, you're exactly right, Chris. We did talk a lot about different options of, you know, having one day, an alternating pattern where the students would come in for one day and then be remote for another day rather than the whole A, B week. But teachers on the committee really felt that they wanted to be able to get some traction going with their students and felt that that might be difficult at the elementary level if there was, um, this every other day pattern. And in terms of the full days, um, I think we touched on that in one of the slides in the presentation regarding just the length of the time for the kids to be in the masks. The length of time for the students to be seated in their desks, um, with lack of movement. We felt like it, they might have actually a better learning situation if they go home, can take their mask off and engage in the live synchronous work with their teacher. And so we made sure that even if it, so if a student is not in school in the morning, then, um, they will be getting that live remote with the teacher in the afternoon. So that was the other change. We tried to make it so that it would, um, be much less like the spring.
May I just say that, um, it, it does represent some additional degree of difficulty for parents in terms of childcare. But from an educational perspective, uh, what we talked about frequently was if you factor in the fact that we're going to need more lunchtimes to, to allow for appropriate social distancing and keeping in mind, one of you, I can't remember whether it's Valerie or someone else said, from the data that you read, it was distancing and it was masks and it was hygiene practices that are the most important. If you net out the amount, if students are in for a full day, net out the amount of time for mask breaks, which could be quite a bit over a full day of school and the amount of time necessary for additional lunches. That comes very close to the amount of instructional time that a student will have in a half-day schedule. Okay, because they're not having a lunch, uh, they're not necessarily having, you know, multiple recesses. And, um, not having as many mask breaks. So from an educational perspective, uh, if you look at it as analytically as possible, it's pretty, pretty close.
Valerie, did you want to hop in with the follow-up on that?
Just a super quick follow-up. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming yes, but just to be sure, um, was alternate spaces considered like a gymnasium for lunches?
Yes, we, um, we're, we have considered additional spaces. What we prefer to do though is reserve those, uh, additional auxiliary spaces, lunchrooms, libraries, cafeterias for any additional instructional space. Most of the classrooms, particularly at the primary level, uh, won't be able to necessarily have small reading circles. Okay, uh, rugwork in, in their classroom because there's just simply not enough social distancing. What we'll have to do is use some of those other spaces, whether it's cafeterias, gymnasiums, uh, libraries. Some cases in the upper grade levels auditoriums for auxiliary instructional space.
So one of, one of the parent questions about lunches, and I know this is more of an operations question rather than a teaching one, but it does seem like some of the operations things, limitations around lunches and buses is, is certainly driving some of the, the decisions about the recommended model. So one of the questions was, um, if students are socially distanced in, in classrooms, doesn't DESE guidance suggest that students could eat lunches in their classrooms?
Uh, the DESE guidance, uh, recommended that students eat, uh, lunch in their classrooms to minimize transitions. They also recommended three feet of spacing. That's a particular concern with primary level students when somebody says, uh, you know, I'll, I'll share my this if I can have your that. And, um, it's also an issue of cleanup and the cleanliness in the classroom. And, uh, that quite honestly could become a nightmare. And it's, it's easy for the DESE to say, oh, kids will eat in class with three foot of distancing. But they're gonna have to take a look at what a classroom looks like after that lunch occurs. And all of the cleanup, all the potential exchange of material. Someone says, say here, Sally, I'll, I'll throw your, your stuff in the bat, wastebasket for you. We're trying to avoid that. Okay. And so I think there's where, uh, we prefer no lunch, certainly no lunch in the classroom. And, you know, the issue of multiple lunches being needed, even with half the students in the, in the school at any one time to, uh, to allow for appropriate distancing.
I would add that we, um, in talking about the lunch in the classrooms, it was another, the other issue is again, we're looking at young children who are used to being able and need to be able to move, truly keeping them seated in their seat for six hours, right? They wouldn't be leaving for their specials. Their specials would be coming to the classroom. They wouldn't be leaving for their lunchtime. Um, it just felt like, um, not a very appropriate environment to expect, um, young children to thrive in or any, any child really. It's too long.
Good point. So I think, I think Lori, you might have just answered another question, um, that, that was about, um, transitions. So, and I know this may look different at the different levels, but at the elementary school, will the class cohort really stay in one room? Will specialists be coming to them? Will specialist instruction still be occurring? Um, is that still going to be incorporated into their school day?
Yes. So we are looking at specials coming to the classroom aside from PE. We're hoping that PE can get outside, possibly use the gymnasium if that's available. Or we've even talked about having some, some kind of low impact activities in the cafeteria. The, um, health and wellness coordinators working with the PE teachers to make sure that they are coming up with some kind of low-key activities for students to do. So, um, all specials will be happening and, um, but they will remain in the classroom, at least at the elementary level.
We're looking at that. At, at the middle school level, um, they would be staying in one cohort. Yes, for the majority of the day as well, um, with the exception of, of some specialized services that where a student might need to leave the cohort in order to, um, receive those services. But the, we're talking about the students staying in one cohort and the teachers moving to those students. But, but we are looking at, um, them also still being able to have, uh, the majority of all of their integrated arts and word languages and, and, and specials as well.
And at the high school, you can see that, uh, by the hybrid model, we have three classes each day. They say sixty minutes, but we're going to be looking towards eight to ten minutes for transition. And we'll also be putting directional tape on the ground on, in the hallways so that students travel in one direction as they go around high school.
So, um, will at the, at the middle school and high school, are, are students still able to access their, their full range of classes? I know that there, I don't know if there may be some schedule changes or cohort changes that are needed, but will they still be able to access all the, all the classes and electives that they had hoped and planned for from last year?
Yeah, that is the plan Gloria at the high school. Um, and I may have to look at some spaces. As Mr. Olson recommended, it could be, uh, cafeteria based on having no lunches. It could be, we have our lower calf, gymnasiums, we have some larger rooms, we have lecture halls, so, uh, flag lobby and so forth. So we're going to be creative. But we want to have, um, the full level of courses that students subscribe to back in, um, in the spring.
And if I can ask a follow-up on that one, because I've been trying to play this out in my head and I have not been able to wrap my head around it. I mean, pod A, pod B makes sense at the elementary level. It's a little trickier at the middle school level, but at, at WA, it just seems like it's going to be really complicated. You know, is the plan still that we're going to just do it based on some fixed criteria alphabetically or whatever? And then obviously, class to class, that's going to vary wildly, right? You could have a class based on who's attending, who signed up for the class that has twenty people from pod A taking a class and five people from pod B taking that class. I don't know how much conversation there was around that and if the sense was that we'll make it work. Or if there's any other ideas on, you know, devising another way of breaking up the pods to handle that. But it just occurs to me with all the classes and all the electives at WA that even split will not be anywhere near even for many classes.
Chris, if you look at the size of the classes, you know, we don't have many classes that approach thirty. So you have to figure that we have fifty percent and then some students are not going to come, are going to choose not to come to school. They're going to use the Remote Learning Academy and so forth. But you are right. The, the, the most, there will be a few outliers, I'm sure, that we're going to have to look at. And we're going to have to figure out how to handle those particular outliers. So I, I wish I could say it's A to L, M to Z, and it's gonna, it's gonna fall out perfectly, but we're going to examine that as soon as the schedules come in and teachers will notify us. And that will definitely be on my checklist with teachers as we come back to school.
The, uh, the IAs at the middle school level, um, the, the difference between, um, the offerings that Westford Academy has in the middle school is that the students rotate through a bunch of different integrated arts at the same time. And so we're, they would still be able to, to access those classes, but instead of them being year-long, we would be looking at them staying in one specific integrated art. So they might stay in their art class for uh, half of the trimester and then rotate to their physical education class. Uh, and they wouldn't be able to take physical education all year. It would have to be for a certain, so many weeks. Because students will be taking six classes at a time.
There, there were, uh, there were a number of questions about this A, A pod, B pod split. And, um, um, one question was, um, did you consider doing a split instead of by, alphab- alphabetical by last name, splitting by neighborhood or splitting by, um, just people's, people's needs in terms of carpooling or childcare or perhaps, you know, this family is trying to coordinate with another family, but they happen to fall in different pods by their last names. Are, are there other possible considerations for how to do the split other than last names?
We talked, um, mostly about last names to keep siblings together. We had not discussed, um, neighborhoods. I don't remember that coming up in our, in our committee anyway.
We, may I say, we looked at it, uh, looked at neighborhoods from a geographical perspective for bus transportation. To us, it, it, it didn't make a lot of difference just from a logistical standpoint. I, in talking with that, if you don't mind me making a comment, uh, we have several questions. Some people have sent me a question directly here asking if there will be school bus transportation in a similar manner to what has occurred in the past. And we're working with the bus company on that. We know that with one child per seat, the capacity is reduced. We're only dealing with half the students or less. One of the important factors, and that's why we need the survey from the parents answered, is if they're going to have their child, uh, if they would choose to have them learn remotely. You know, the statutory requirement is that we are obligated to transport students in grades K through six who live two miles or more. Actually, it says more than two miles from their attending school district. Seven through twelve, the transportation of those students, according to the statute, is not required. But because we have no sidewalks in town, we've historically transported students and, you know, certainly in the last fifteen years with, with bus fees. But we're trying to assess that right now with the, with the bus company. We know the capacity we have with thirty-six buses. So we're just trying to figure out how many students will be educated remotely, remove them and figure out if we have enough bus capacity to allow students. Now granted, we're not sure right now. We're still working and we'll, we'll make a recommendation to you on a transportation fee. All right. Um, I personally don't think it would be the full, full fee, uh, given the fact that it's, there were only half students at any one time attending school. So we'll come up with a recommendation to you for transportation services, but also a fee in the next week or two.
If, and if I could, just to go back to the original question about grouping pods by neighborhood, since we're already trying to group them by family, I would, I would definitely recommend if we feel like it's feasible to try to do it that way. Cause I think it, we're hearing from a lot of families that, that lets them use little bubbles of, you know, care and things like that where, where they live. And that could be a, a lifesaver, I think, for, especially for working parents.
Um, uh, there, there are, is a whole nother, There, there are, is a whole nother set of questions regarding children who may be on IEPs or 504 plans. And how will services be delivered to those students under this hybrid model?
Courtney?
Hi. So certainly, the instruction will continue as directed on the IEP. We will have to take a look at, under these circumstances, how do we get in all of those services? Especially when a student is at home. But we do want to continue with providing specialized instruction in the area of language arts and in math. We do want to continue with providing all of the organizational skills necessary for the content areas, whether it be social studies and science. Therapies will continue and we will make some good scheduling decisions, whether that's going to alternate on A week and B week, because we will have the ability to do more teletherapy that was not completed in the spring, but that will continue. We're also looking at the possibility of bringing students in by appointment during that B week. If students require a higher level of support, team meetings you can, will continue. We are going to continue with all child find activities and obligations, whether that's the early intervention students coming in, requiring evaluations or any initial evaluation from a parent and/or staff member. Those obligations will not stop. And so we are, it will look much different than the spring when we were basically, you know, in shutdown and all had individual remote learning plans. Now, you know, one thing that Alicia had brought up in, you know, when can we expect to have very clear, you know, communication in regards to who will be the liaison and included in that chain of events and, and chain of command of who I can contact? We are still at the mercy of additional guidance coming out from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And that very much includes special education. And so it is fresh, just as frustrating for us as we navigate through some of these very difficult things, especially when it comes to our obligations around state and federal law. Nothing that we did in the spring was by any means rogue in terms of Westford Way. It was all under the guidance of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And they too are flexing and changing their model and their ideas as well. Certainly, students that are on 504 plans have accommodations that were developed because they were all in-person services. And so that might change because some of the accommodations might change. The needs might change because this is a remote, some of it will be remote, some of it will be in-person. And then one of the biggest hurdles for us to get over is the fact that we certainly need to provide services to those students whose disability does not allow them to access remote education to the same extent as some of our other students in a mainstream inclusionary model. And so some of those students would be, you know, anybody who's receiving over seventy-five percent of their special education services outside of the general education setting, as well as our youngest learners, the preschoolers, three and four and five-year-olds, where it's just not fair to assume that they're going to be able to be independent enough to navigate the remote instruction that is currently being offered. I, I can tell you that our extended year service program is dabbling in the teletherapy. And I'm receiving some very good thumbs up in regards, from our special, I'm sorry, from our speech language pathologist, who has been completing that teletherapy, as well as some of our other therapists who are doing some very directed OT and PT in-person services as well. So we are listening to what they're saying as far as what the positives and what the challenges are. We are trying to meet their needs in terms of other technology needs that they're requesting, such as a document camera for the occupational therapists, additional PPE for those who require, were doing in-person services and working with a student who might be medically fragile and unable to wear a mask themselves. So we are troubleshooting every angle and committed to making some significant improvements from what was delivered in the spring.
Gloria, if I can jump in here for a second? Thanks. While we have Courtney on the line. Courtney, if you could speak to the decision to not include the peer models in the preschool this year and what drove that decision? And also, there's a lot of parents asking what the pre-K program will look like. Now that it's folded into our buildings, will it be on the same schedule as the kindergarten model? What is that going to look like for you?
So first of all, last week, we made the very difficult decision to not include our tuition-paying role model students from the community. We need to be flexible to be able to move between any one of these models that the commissioner has charged the district in developing. And we're, it's also a tuition program. And so it just doesn't feel right to charge tuition for a student who might be at home in their living room, receiving remote instruction, nor do we think that that's a good thing for three, four and, and five-year-olds. The other main piece is, these are our youngest learners who will not be wearing masks to school. These are our students who we need to make sure are staying six feet away from each other. And so that in itself is a huge challenge in thinking about a three-year-old, a four-year-old, a young five-year-old. And so in order to be able to have social distancing, that is certainly some of the considerations that we had in making that difficult decision. Both the tuition, the social distancing, the masks, and the acknowledgement that we exist, we provide special preschool programming because of our special education students. And so right now, we need to really target, what are those services that are on the IEP? And let's get that instruction to our students in the very best possible way and with the most integrity. And so for those reasons, we did decide that we would discontinue the tuition-paying program. What was your secondary question, Alicia? I'm sorry.
So where?
Okay. So we also acknowledge that doing an A week and a B week could be quite confusing for students, especially when you can, when we know what it's like for students to transition in to a school setting and then they go home for a period of time. And then always coming back after Christmas or coming back after February vacation, it's all that separation again from, you know, mom, dad, the caretaker. And so for those reasons, we're looking at alternating A and B days, similar to our kindergarten model. Now, it is going to be highly individualized because some of our IEPs do not call for full-day services and not even everyday services. So there might be a student who only comes in twice a week for their preschool program opposed to another student who might have been recommended for five, you know, and a half full-day sessions. So the range of needs definitely exists and we'll be looking at what that might look like for each individual student. I'll be working directly with the preschool teachers and getting more insight from them. I received an email today from one of our preschool, from actually two of our preschool teachers after we had a meeting last week. Both of them giving feedback and what they felt as though would be appropriate for their young learners in this hybrid model. So I appreciate that very much.
So since we're on the theme of our, our young learners, there are a lot of concerns about the kindergarten program. So i- if we can clarify, what does kindergarten look in the hybrid, look like in the hybrid model? What are, what is, what is their schedule like? What does learning look like for kindergarten learners during their in-the-building versus out-of-the-building weeks?
Hi. Valerie?
No, I, I thought Bill was talking without being, with muted. Sorry, I was just waving to him to show.
Is Lori, is Lori, are you going to take this one for kindergarten?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's going to be a great answer for the people who were, you know, hoping for their full day. I think where, what we were concerned about is the fact that the, the afternoon time would be fully remote and it, it just, we just couldn't charge people when they're not going to be in school, right? We just didn't, since it's really not, they wouldn't be getting their money's worth. So it, it, and aside from that, the day for a kindergartner to envision a kindergartner coming to school in the morning, wrapping up, traveling home and then engaging in a remote session seemed inappropriate for the, for the age. Scott, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
No, that, that was exactly the discussion we had. And, you know, obviously, this was a very difficult decision. We went back and forth, looked, looked at the schedule and talked about what are the different options? What could we do? And when it came, like, like Lori said, when it came down to it, we just didn't envision having five-year-olds, you know, leaving school, going back, logging back on and being expected to get something out of that afternoon session at this point. So that was really what the decision came down to.
So, so if kindergarten students aren't participating in those afternoon synchronous sessions with their teacher, does that effectively mean that kindergartners are in the building one week, but then completely remote with no connection to their teachers the following week? Was, was, how did you land on that suggestion versus maybe doing like what the preschool is doing and doing the alternating A, B days throughout the week? So at least each student was in the building and maintaining that connection at some point during the week?
Laura, you can answer that, right? You were part of that discussion?
I can, yeah. It was a discussion and that was our first plan. But there were actually some teachers on the committee who felt that they had experienced a past situation where the kids were, the kindergartners were coming in for, for two and a half days and they, they felt like they weren't getting the level of traction that they wanted to get. They felt like it would just be that alternating day. They really felt strongly that they needed a consistent chunk of time with them. I fully understand that equals a consistent amount of time of, of them being off. But the teachers felt that that was a trade-off they were willing to make to get those routines and to get that pattern of instruction down with the students before sending them off remotely. One day didn't feel like enough.
This, this applies to kindergarten, but really all of, all of the elementary level. And, and I know I mentioned it at the beginning, but there are so many questions about it. I feel like I, I just have to ask it again. Is, is there any thought? Do, do we have any suggestions about how, how to address the concerns that we're seeing in the questions from working parents who are just at a loss, trying to think how they would make this system work? And how they could be available on this schedule? And how much, you know, support will their students need? If they're those kindergarten students during those off weeks when they are on full remote, without those connections to teachers, how much support will those kids need? For the one to five kids who are logging on in, in the afternoon? Again, for working parents, they're asking, you know, how much support will my kid need? What, how am I supposed to manage that if we have two working parents?
Yeah, I mean, it's important for the community to know that this was not an oversight on our part. We talked a lot about, in every single format, we looked, we looked at implementing. We, one of the first things that came up is how is this going to work for families? And in every situation, you know, the challenges were huge. We did talk at length about offering some, and I know that Bill and Carrie were often coming back around with this question of trying to offer some form of childcare in the school. You know, was there something that we could do? But the, the issues with that are spacing, cleaning, and then the mixing of cohorts, which is a real concern for people. If we were to offer, you know, some kind of childcare, now it's going to be really hard to separate out those cohorts. So in turn, to, to answer the other part of your question, in terms of the remote time for kindergartners, you know, we're at the very beginning stages of, of all of this planning. And the Teaching and Learning Committee still has a ton of work to do once we decide on the plan that we're moving forward with. And we have talked with the coordinators about using some of our interventionists to possibly provide support during those times. So I think that we can work really hard to be creative so that we aren't leaving our youngest learners on their own completely in those weeks, because we all recognize that those are very challenging times.
Bill?
Just want to make sure the parents understand that all of you and the administration are still committed to full-day kindergarten to the greatest extent possible. And at such time that the metrics indicate that school systems may be able to go back full-return model. You know, we would look to restore the full-day K. Wouldn't happen within a two or three-day period. It would probably be a two or three-week period to allow us to re- reallocate people, move furnishings back in or out. And so it would take a little bit of time. But this is not a long-term trend. If, if we go back to full in-person, we will go back to a full-day K.
Apparently Hannah has had a hand up and I've been missing it. Sorry Hannah, what were your questions?
That's okay. I just had a few questions specifically for the high school plan. The first one was just about MCAS. I know we never got the chance to take it in the spring and it is a graduating requirement, the science one. So are we going to be making that up in the fall?
Some of that guidance is yet to come from the commissioner's office. I know we did waive some of the competency requirements for the last school year, but we're awaiting guidance on that Hannah, for this upcoming school year.
Okay. Second, I just had a question about when we're switching between in-person classes in the morning and online classes in the afternoon. Are we going to have time between them? Because I know for students who are juniors who drive to school, we can't park at the school. So we'll have to walk to our cars and drive home and eat lunch and then get online in the afternoon. Is there going to be time between classes for us to do that?
What we'll do Hannah is take a look at how many students are coming to school. I'm not saying no to junior parking at this time. So if there's an opportunity for us to offer parking to juniors to help out with transitions, I might, I might be able to do that. So as many folks have said here today, we're still teasing some of these things out to try and make transitions and to try and make it as easy as possible for families.
Okay. The last thing was, I know a lot of people touched on this earlier, but I think if there was any way possible to keep grades similar in the A and B pods, that would probably be helpful to a lot of kids, just so they're interacting with more people in their classes. And like getting to know new classes at the beginning of the year, it's important so we can all like learn together better. I understand that, you know, for families, it's important to keep students together so they can get home. I just think it would relieve a lot of stress if you were with more of your peers during the day. Um, I just think it would relieve a lot of stress if you were with more of your peers during the day. And that's it.
You wanna mute Jim?
Again, I think that, you know, you've heard some conversations tonight. I know, uh, Mr. Sanders said, you know, you may wanna take a look going back to neighborhoods and so forth. So I think, you know, we're open to any kinds of comments. I think it's, it's pretty difficult task to try and do that, but, um, we're listening to the committee tonight and the questions and concerns. And I know that we have a lot of work ahead of us, so, um, we'll certainly take a look at that. And, and again, it could be that, well, this is a hybrid model, maybe we're, we're helping families out. Maybe a significant amount of families aged well could stay together, but we do make some shifts based on different family situations. Um, as Mr. Sanders pointed out earlier, it may not be a perfect, um, fifty-fifty. Uh, and so we may have to do some manipulation of the courses and maybe some families would be going to do that to help us out. So I, I wanna leave all, all, um, doors open to try and figure this out as we move forward.
Hannah, Mr. Jimmy here. Um, just one, you know, Westford Academy being seventeen hundred students, we, we do have a, a major capacity issue. You know, having all the students there, the amount of classes we have with twenty or more students and, you know, even at three feet, w- we would have almost an impossible time having everybody there. Even if we used every available space within the building, um, it was a real challenge. Um, the only thing with, uh, and we're, we're evaluating everything still with the pods. But the only real challenge with grades is like if you have twenty-five, if we have all the juniors there and they all have a biology class together or they, or they all have an English class together, or they all have a chem class or a history class together, you have those twenty-five kids in that class with you. And it's, it's really challenging to have that many spaces available, uh, to, to socially distance appropriately.
So I think one of the things that could happen there is, Hannah, is again, some of the remote learning that could take place. So perhaps like let's use an example of an English eleven class that might have twenty-four students. And, you know, if we split that in half, you know, a percentage of students would come, Pod A, Pod B and so forth. But the remote opportunity would at least engage you folks, uh, perhaps in a Zoom or a Google Meet kind of opportunity until we get through to the other side. Cause I, I'm gonna stick with my, my own, my, my positive and this is gonna pass. We're gonna get through this and I, I like the way Massachusetts is trending, so I'm just gonna say thumbs up and we're gonna keep moving forward.
Yeah, that's, thank you. Um, that's understandable. I just think it's really important for classes to be together so we can have class discussions and learn better together. But thank you.
Hannah, maybe you and the other, uh, student council folks can, can brainstorm ways to maintain that kind of class community and that class solidarity, even if you are split into A and B pods. Maybe there are remote events and, and things, you know, you can do, you know, sophomore class trivia night, um, events or, or something that you could do online that would kind of maintain that sense of community. Might be fun for you guys to, to brainstorm some ideas for that. I had one more, uh, question about just kind of how, how this version of hybrid is working. And then I think we've got a couple of remote learning questions and then I, I think we'll have to jump to some of the other topics, um, like health and hygiene concerns. I know we're not gonna be able to get to all these questions tonight, but we're gonna try and get in as many as we can. Um, so I appreciate all of our, of our administrators being patient, try to answer as many of these questions as we can. The, the question, um, that came in about the, the alternate, alternating weeks is if, and maybe this does apply at more of a high school level, if, you know, the A pod is, is in the building and for safety, the B pod is at home, why not have, um, a synchronous connection there and have the B pod log in and kind of be remotely participating in the class from home? So kind of doing, um, that synchronous learning with B pod and the in, in-person instruction with A pod at the same time. Was that considered?
So yeah, so we did, um, talk about different, uh, different options like that. And I think even some of those types of things could find themselves happening as we go through this. But honestly, we experienced it, um, just last week when we had a meeting at central office where we put as many people as we could into a room. We were all sitting in rows facing forward, exactly the way that the kids are expected to be sitting. And there was an entire contingent of people who were participating remotely. And they did not get the same experience. Um, it was, it, it, they weren't able to hear everything that was going on. They weren't able to ask questions in real time, the way that students who were in the classroom were able to ask questions. I mean, so we just really started to see this whole different level of inequity just rise up when you're trying to keep both of those two, two groups connected like that. So I think there might very well be some isolated moments or activities where that would make sense. Uh, but, but to just have that as part of our schedule, we decided that that was not, that, that really wasn't the most sound educational way to move forward. Because it just, it's not creating the dynamic that you would hope that it would create. Not to mention, we found that, you know, here we are as human beings trained to look at people when we're talking to them. And we're sitting in a room where we're all supposed to be facing forward and it just began to really highlight how students are gonna struggle with this, where they're supposed to face forward. No one's supposed to be facing each other. They're supposed to be, um, six feet apart. But yet when someone in the back of the room speaks, you want to turn around and look at the person who's talking or you would wanna turn around and address them. And so there's a whole bunch of layers throughout this experience of, that we've been experiencing in this process that just really solidifies the reason why we've been concerned about the environment, the actual classroom environments that are necessary to maintain all this physical distancing.
I would add that we also, when, when talking about this, um, we felt that it would, uh, actually offer the ability for the teacher to provide more targeted instruction. Um, if, if we kept the group smaller, there was, um, at one point, it, at least for the elementary cohort, we were thinking that it would be great for that afternoon, um, time that everybody would be, the whole class would be together in that remote session so that they would have some, you know, just some FaceTime with, with their classmates. Um, and that certainly can still happen. That's definitely still an option. But we felt like it would take away from valuable instructional time that the teacher could use with a smaller targeted group of students. And that's gonna be really important that we make the most of the time that we have with the students. And that's one of the reasons why, um, we're pleased that these groups are going to be so much smaller.
So the, the last set of questions really does pertain to the, the choice parents, um, are gonna be and families will be facing in the coming weeks of, um, if thi- this is the plan we go forward with, um, whether they would be enrolling in the, the hybrid blended learning option or the Remote Learning Academy. And there are a, a series of questions, um, here about how do we make that choice if we don't fully know what the Remote Learning Academy option looks like? And so what, what, um, and I, I know it's still under development, so I don't know if all of these questions can be answered, but it's things like what does, what would the schedule for that look like? What, um, how do you, would that be led by Westford teachers? Um, how would, um, high school students, um, be offered kind of the full range of classes that they could experience, um, in the hybrid model? Uh, and, um, and how do you, um, maintain, um, the social emotional needs and, um, connections between those students who would be experiencing all remote instruction?
Gloria, I guess, uh, my answer to that would be, um, I'd like to take that whole array of questions that you just asked and sit down with the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, uh, hopefully this week and come up with some specific, as, as specific answers as we can. Um, you know, it, it would certainly be taught by, by our staff. We're not sure just yet. Uh, one of the answers, we don't have the question, uh, one of the questions we don't have the answer to, excuse me, is what role the state is going to play in terms of a remote learning platform? Uh, we would have liked to have seen that decision made about a month to two months ago, but it still hasn't been made and that could be an important component in all of this. So if, if we could have just a few more days to take a look at this and come up with an answer, uh, either during the week or for next Monday night, I'd, I'd greatly appreciate that opportunity.
Yeah, I, I think that based on the quest, some of the questions we're seeing is that parents, um, would have an easier time kind of answering whatever surveys goes out next. Um, if, if they have, um, as much information as possible. We may not be able to answer all the questions, but as much information as we can give them for this next phase of, of surveying. There's, the, the whole next set of questions, um, really pertains to health concerns. And, um, this parent asks that they know you're awaiting directions, um, from the state, but they're very concerned about what happens, um, if you're sick and, um, can't come in because of COVID or, or another sickness and because you've been exposed to COVID. How, um, if a child has to quarantine because of possible exposure, um, we know there are gonna be more absences. Whether it's, it's from COVID, from quarantine or from other illnesses that, um, are, that mimic COVID, um, as such that then students can't attend. How are, how are all those absences gonna be handled and how will students still be receiving instruction, um, if they're home?
Absences, could you clarify that absence of students or staff or both?
I think, well, this parent was, was talking about, um, about students, but I, I know there are questions i- in here of, of both. And also how, how will staff absences be handled as well?
Well, we, um, are, are planning to have some, uh, full-time substitutes and perhaps several of them, at least in every building. To be able to step in immediately to fill a void if a classroom teacher is, uh, is ill for whatever, whatever reason. Uh, this is a model that we employed about twenty years ago, worked very well. We had to eliminate it for budget reduction reasons. But we would charge this because it would be considered an incremental expenditure beyond something that we currently fund. We would charge that to the CARES money, um, you know, the, the coronavirus, uh, uh, Emergency Response Act monies and, um, fund it that way. But I, we've talked about that being the most, most effective way. Uh, you know, obviously if students are absent, um, not able to access the curriculum, you know, we would have provisions in place for helping them make up that, uh, that work. I'm not sure if anyone at the, uh, any of the principals or Chris, uh, if there was anything in particular you discussed in the teaching and learning, actually, that could be more specific than what I have, I've answered?
What we did-
We, yeah, go ahead Courtney, sorry.
I was just gonna say that we did certainly acknowledge that, you know, absences and/or tardies would be something that we would be dealing with on a daily basis. Um, and we certainly don't want anybody to be penalized for doing the right thing in staying home um, and making a good health decision for themselves, for their family and for the student body. Um, now that being said, last spring, we also saw how, um, the Department of Ed- Education also relaxed some of their standards in regards to attendance policies. And so we might see further guidance coming out in regards to that. Um, having remote as, as an option will also help us to bridge those students who are at home and are not necessarily, can, that might be kind of confined to their home based on how they feel, but they're not in a, in a state in which they cannot access the curriculum. And so that would have to be an individual parent, um, decision about whether that student could actually access, um, the, uh, curriculum on that given day. And so we definitely know that there will be students that are moving between both, um, options of being in hybrid and remote and that still needs to be flushed out.
The, um, there was a series of questions about mask wearing. Um, I know the, the state guidance requires that students in second grade and higher, um, will be, would be required to wear a mask. Um, it's, uh, it looks like our plan is, is asking all students, including the K-one students, um, to wear a mask during the day. And I think the, the questions are, are along the lines of how is that, how is that gonna work for the, for our youngest learners? And, um, how will it work if someone is, is unable to wear a mask for, um, medical or behavioral reasons? Um, how would it work, um, for a student who may be able to wear a mask but having a difficult time? Um, and is, is just having a rough day and being non-compliant? Um, and, and doesn't want to wear the mask. Like how are, how are those situations going to be handled, especially at the younger grades?
Yeah, um, in, in some cases, uh, we know that, um, children will have a, a difficult time wearing the masks. Uh, we anticipate more frequent mask breaks at the younger grade levels than at the upper grade levels. Uh, we will, uh, are in the process right now of purchasing some plastic shields that, um, we wanna keep the children in the classroom to the greatest extent possible, as long as we have adequate distancing. And we could distance them at least six feet away with a shield if necessary. Now, the one thing we need to be careful of there is if we, if we do that for one child, will all parents say, well, you can put a shield up for my, my child too. That becomes, um, very difficult. Cost prohibitive and from a cleaning perspective also on a daily basis. Um, we know that there's gonna, we absolutely know there's gonna be an adjustment period, uh, for, for the masks. Quite honestly, it's one of the reasons, not the primary reason, but one of the underlying reasons why we've decided in the Teaching and Learning Committee has, has been stated, decided to go with half-day to make it that much easier for students to tolerate that with appropriate mask breaks built in. There is no easy answer to, to this one. Um, sensory issues we know are, are an issue. Uh, you know, we've talked about it with, with Courtney. Uh, we'll make whatever accommodations that we need to make. Now, if there is a child in the mainstream setting who absolutely refuses to wear a mask, um, we will, we will have to work with the parents to see if they can work with the child or we may have to recommend that that, that child go fully remote, uh, if, if there's, it's an issue we, we can't remedy. You know, there is nothing easy about this and I'll never pretend to, to, to say that. But, uh, we'll do whatever we can to make sure students stay in class, stay safe and, uh, deal with the individual situations as they come up.
And I think it's fair to say that with most, really with most students, um, with the, um, classroom kind of team building that the teachers do and the setting of the expectations and the routines, um, most of the students, I believe, truly will learn um, and probably want to have their mask on like all of their friends. I think this will be, become part of their classroom experience. So when they don't, we will handle it very gently.
I mean, I, I do think it will help if, um, you know, in, instead of one of these, uh, you know, the parents come up with either some sports theme or character theme that, uh, students might be interested in and might, honestly, might wanna show their mask off and make it more, uh, more easy for them to keep it on.
Um, there are, there are a number of questions around, um, air quality in the buildings. And I know there, there's being some, some testing done right now. Um, so I don't know if we have any information about when those testing results might be available and how it would be, um, disseminated to parents who are concerned about air quality.
Yeah, the, the test results will be available, I anticipate in about three weeks. Those results will be posted on our, our website. Uh, we also be sent to the Teachers Union. Uh, be sent to the principals in case any teacher, once the school begins, if we, if we do come back in the hybrid, will be available for them. Uh, any products that are used for cleaning or disinfecting have material safety data sheets as required by law. Those are always available, uh, in the office. So the teachers can, uh, can ascertain what the ingredients are of a particular cleaning or disinfecting agents. But, um, you know, we, we're committed to, uh, HVAC systems that are working properly and good air quality. Now, sometimes the classrooms, as you know, in September, uh, can get very hot. They did- They did a couple, a couple of years ago, and we had to, instead of full days, had to go to half-days for the first week of school. But hot classrooms don't necessarily mean poor air quality or lack of function of the air handling system. We don't have air conditioning in our buildings, except some of the newer buildings in the core areas. So hot classrooms, it's important to know, don't mean classrooms with inadequate airflow. What we have to make sure of also is the staff does not put papers, books, folders on the air handling equipment, the unit vents that are adjacent to the walls, because that blocks the airflow. So the whole education process that we'll go through, but we are having the baseline studies done. And those will be ready in about about three weeks.
Um, the the next health question, and and I know I I'm jumping through these quickly, but there are, there are so, there are so many, and I know it's also getting late. So I'm going to try and get a few more of the the key topics in. For, there are a series of questions surrounding testing and tracing. Would, our our plan does not involve taking temperatures. The proposed plan does not involve any testing to be done by the school system. But what is, what is the protocol for if a student does test positive? Does, what what is the process that then happens? Does that mean that suddenly their entire class has to quarantine? That their teacher has to quarantine for students at Westford Academy? Does that mean a chain of seven classworths? How does the ramifications of the contact tracing work?
Not necessarily in terms of whole classes or schools quarantine. As Jeff Stevens, our Health Department Director, has stated, they look at every case on an individual basis. So what happens is if a student or staff member tests positive, that physician is obligated to send those test results to the Department of Public Health in the state. The state enters that into what's called the Maven Database, which is Massachusetts Virtual Epidemiological Network. That is communicated to the local health department. And the local health department does the investigation and tracing. The local health department will determine who has been in close contact with that student. In other words, essentially less than six feet for more than 15 minutes. They will talk with the students to the left and the right, the front and the back of the students. They will do some sort of as much tracing as they possibly can in terms of who that student or that staff member was in close contact, remembering the definition of that. The student will be responsible for being home for 10 days. The students who were considered by the Health Department to be in close contact will be quarantined for 14 days. Well, why is there a difference? Because sometimes the incubate incubation period of the virus is such that it may take two to five days to express itself, okay, and for a child to test positive. So the child who might be in the vicinity, who might have been considered close contact, will actually be home for a longer period of time than the child who tests positive. Child who tests positive has to go 10 days, but then three days without any symptoms after that. So it's actually a total of 13 days. But it's the Health Department in Westford that will have full control over that process and not the school system.
So if if, I mean, I I I hope people realize what this means. You know, one student with a positive test, and I'm looking at the state guidance, and they say in elementary settings, they consider the entire cohort to have close contact. Now, I don't know if that's what we're saying, but, you know, they would basically say, one student in Pod A, you know, Mrs. Smith's class in Pod A has a positive test. All the other students in that pod and Mrs. Smith are now quarantined for two weeks. And so I guess one question would be, what does that do to Pod B? But then also, it also speaks to the benefits of having remote and hybrid be very fluid, that we can move between one or the other for any given student pod. And then lastly, it speaks to people who, you know, who say we should just be full return. You know, the disruptions of losing students and entire classes to quarantine, you know, periodically throughout the term, you know, at the very least, we have to be prepared for remote and hybrid learning. So I think it just, it it does emphasize that.
Yeah, Chris, to answer your your comment about would the entire Pod be quarantined? Not necessarily, as the Health Department has indicated, Jeff Stevens and Gail Johnson. Once again, it's on a case-by-case basis. And that's what they tried to do is throw a job in the trace analysis as possible to determine who, if anyone else, needs to be quarantined.
There, there is a, there's another question here about if if parents decide that none of these models work for them, that the the hybrid model doesn't work for their family, the remote learning academy doesn't work for their family, what, and they decide they want to engage in homeschooling. What is, what is the process that they have to follow to homeschool their children? Being clear that they're talking about the official homeschooling and not the crisis kind of schooling that occurred last spring, but something that they would do completely independently of the district? How does that work?
The the process for many years for homeschooling is that parents who wish to engage in that have to make an application to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction in the school system here. Their curriculum, their intent for the education of their children, depending upon their age and and grade level, commensurate grade level, has to be clearly articulated, how our assessment's going to be conducted. Now, those children are eligible under normal conditions. If we were in school under non-COVID conditions, the law does state that they can participate in some school department-related activities. But they need the approval from, in this case, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Cleary. The reason they need that formal approval is because as a school committee, you are responsible for the education of every child within the borders of Westford. You have to know where they are in terms of any private school education, any charter school, or those who are homeschooling, because we need to account for those children in a report to the state every year in terms of how they're being educated and where they're being educated. So there is a formal process. It starts with the application to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
So we're over 200 questions now. I think we've done our best to try and get in as many as we can. I I told myself I was going to try and cut this off at at 9:30, and then I told myself 9:45, and now it's 10. So I I appreciate everyone's endurance in in answering all these questions tonight. I guess the last one I will ask, and I know you touched on this at the beginning, Bill, but just really to clarify for parents. What happens next? What is, what is the timeline for when parents may be surveyed? When parents may have to make more final decisions about the fall? When school committee will be asked to make final decisions about about plans, final submissions to the state? If we could just review that for everyone as a as a wrap-up here?
Yes, the the Department of Education is requiring us to submit this initial draft this Friday for July 31st. They are requiring our final draft, if there are any changes to this initial draft, to be submitted on August 10th. That means that you really do need to make a decision next Monday night. And we will try to provide as much information, additional information, as parents might need. We'd like to take a look at all those questions. We know that parents would like a little bit more definition in terms of what the remote learning experience will look like. We'll do our best to do that. We'd like to survey the, because we'd like to be able to survey the the parents to provide those results to you next Monday night. Now, that may might be a tight timeline. There is that possibility that we could have an additional school committee meeting even beyond next Monday night if if we need a few more days before the deadline of of August 10th to garner that data from from the parents. The staff, it becomes a little bit easier because we want to know whether what their thoughts are in terms of the return now that the model has been approved. You know, and I know that the MTA is, you know, is taking a position that it's not safe to return to school. Well, I'm I'm not going to get into that. All I'm saying is we've done our homework presenting a plan to you. I want to find out from the teachers if they'll be returning with a hybrid model or if they will not be returning. We want to know also what kind of professional development they will be, they will be requiring and desiring. So sometime within the next 10 days, it needs to happen. And, you know, the interesting part is that there are some school systems that are just starting their their committees right now. We've been at this for six weeks, and it's taken this long. And and we still don't have all the answers as precisely as either you might want or some of the parents might want. And so it's going to take a little bit of time, but we're going to try and make it all happen within the next 10 days, certainly with with you.
Well, thank you for all the work that's gone into this. Thank you for all the parents who have come tonight and asked questions. If 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 we didn't get to them, I'm I'm hoping we can, we can collect them and organize them into some kind of frequently asked questions that then we can send out to parents. And hopefully, that will be helpful to you in providing more information. I think we really want to provide as much information and communication as possible. We know we don't have all the answers about what school will look like in the fall. And it won't look like what school has looked like in the past. But what we do know is whether it's in our buildings, whether it's remote, whether it's in some sort of blend of the two, that our students are going to be learning this fall. School is open. Students will be learning, students will be engaged, teachers will be providing instruction, and they will find new ways of making those connections and having fun and learning together. We just have to sort through the process and the details to get us there. So thank you, everybody, for being part of this tonight. I know we still have some committee business here. Ingrid, I I'm realizing that there is a COVID funding up. Oh, I'm sorry, Alicia's got a hand up. Ingrid, I don't know if that's quick or Alicia need to hop in before. I'm sorry, to committee members, if I jumped ahead, if anybody needs to jump in, please do.
I just, my question is super quick. I've been asked by a couple of parents if we can leave that link up to continue to collect questions for a little bit, for a couple of days or however long, so that we can continue to, as people digest this, continue to collect the questions.
I'm I'm seeing nodding from from the question master. Okay.
Yeah, it'll be active, we'll just, it'll be open and active.
Yeah, well.
And we could even think about posting it as well.
Yeah, we can, we can keep that that question link open. If that's an easier way, I mean, people, of course, can also email the superintendent, they can email specific questions to their building principal or the appropriate person who might be able to help them. But but if if the question form works well, we can, we can keep that live as well. Ingrid?
Yes, this could be super fast.
Great.
So I just, I just wanted to report that the state late last week did give us our allocation of the coronavirus relief fund school reopening grant. So Westford's allocation was $1,057,725. So we do have to apply for that. The deadline is the end of August. So we will be putting together an application for those funds. The funds are going to be used for pretty much anything that is related to reopening schools during this pandemic. Everything, pretty much so many of the things that were discussed tonight, from transportation to technology, social emotional support, PPE, training and professional development, and among other things. So we will be starting that process as soon as we get this process done.
Ingrid, may I ask, one of the, the questions I think we need to ask or receive an answer from from the state? I haven't seen it yet, I'm I'm not sure if you have is, I know the the funds have to be expended, I believe, on it before December 31st.
Correct.
But if we are choosing to expend them on some additional personnel to provide support services to children, will just the encumbrance be accepted with the liquidation over the remainder of the year? Or does that money absolutely have to be encumbered and liquidated by the end of the the year? And I'm I'm not sure I've seen that in any of their documents.
Yeah, it just says obligated, so I I will follow up with the state. I have a webinar on it this week, so.
Okay, thank you.
Are are there any other kind of conditions or requirements for that money? Are we required to have in-building learning? Or can can it really be used for remote learning academy or or anything?
Remote, actually, I think they assume that parts will be because, you know, I mean, a lot of districts because of having to provide a remote option, you know, that's a piece that a lot of districts need to bolster. So absolutely, remote learning is a, is, you know, one of the larger categories. And and they have, one category is pretty much anything else. So other innovative efforts.
We've got a lot of innovation going on. Other questions from the committee about the shortest good news financial update ever?
And we did already receive our $20,000 allocation from the Esser Grants, which are, was the first allocation with CARES. Carey put in an application, and it'll be spent towards some some software that will enhance remote learning.
Great. I know, I know we're going to be getting into finances a lot more next week. Any anything else right now from the committee? Okay, then, unless I'm missing anything, somebody wave a hand if I am. We can move ahead with final business of the night, and we have warrant approvals. Alicia, what do, do we have a payroll and expense expense warrant?
We do indeed, and thank you, Ingrid, for that. So first up, motion to approve payroll warrant 2103 S P in the amount of $277,538.50.
Second.
A roll call vote, Avery?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I'm aye, so that's unanimous. The next one.
Motion to approve expense warrant number 2056 S D in the amount of $18,126.11.
Second.
What's wrong, Ingrid?
That was last week's warrant, wasn't it? We don't have an expense warrant this week.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So wait.
Okay, let's wind it back. So it sounds like we don't have an expense warrant for this week?
No.
Okay.
Did we do the appropriate payroll payroll warrant number? Or did we read an incorrect amount?
No, I think that was right, let me grab it.
Okay.
I think it would have been the wrong number, so if it is, my apologies. We, that is a payroll warrant we already approved. So we have, looking at the.
I apologize, I didn't have it right in front of me.
Oops, no worries. We'll just, if we need to rewind and revote, we can.
Yep, I think we do, actually. I apologize. Yes, so it's payroll warrant 2105 S P? Yes, so it's um payroll warrant two one oh five S P?
Okay, um so then we, we had previously approved that one. So this one is motion to approve two one oh five S P, payroll warrant two one oh five S P in the amount of eighty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Second.
And um before we, before we vote, I had a question on that. The, the amount um seems different on this one.
Yes. So every five years is something I learned, new for me. I think it, you know, due to just um the funny days in the three hundred and fifty-six days in a year, our system of paying year-round employees twenty-six paychecks doesn't work. Like, there's an extra week that
Yeah.
fills in. So this is our extra week. So most of us didn't get a paycheck this week. We'll have a three-week break, so next week we'll get our paychecks, and the, these are our time shooters.
Okay.
So custodians and um summer help.
Got it. So that's why this one seems different. Okay, thank you for that clarification. So now that we've got the, the right um payroll warrant, um and we had a motion and a second? Yep. Um, so Avery?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I'm aye, so that is unanimous, and we got the right one. There are no minutes this week. So um we will be adjourning to executive session, and we will clearly not be returning to public session. We will be done for the evening. Um, so motion, Alicia, do you have the wording?
I do, and I promise it's correct the time. Sorry about that, Ingrid.
No, no, I apologize.
It's been the longest of weeks. Okay, so motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to Unit A collective bargaining in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. The community, the committee will not return to public session.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I'm also aye, so we are unanimous. We are adjourned to executive session. Um, thank you, everybody. Good night. Valerie?
Aye.
And I'm also aye, so we are unanimous. We are adjourned to executive session. Um, thank you, everybody. Good night. Valerie?
Aye.
And I'm also aye.